Thank you. All right. Good evening, everybody. We are here for a joint work session between the Marion County Board of Commissioners and the City of Salem City Council. It is Thursday, January 30th, 2025, and it is 6:01 PM, and we're in the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. We're going to start with introductions, and I'm going to do a little housekeeping, and then we'll go from there. So I'm Commissioner Danielle Bethel.
I'm Colm Mullis.
Kevin Cameron.
Go ahead, Mickey. We'll get back to her.
Mickey Barney, Salem City Councilor.
Thank you.
Jan Fritz, Marion County Chief Administrator.
Steve Elzinga, County Council.
Paige Clarkson. We need everybody to speak into the microphones. I'm sorry. And you might have to push the button if it's not on.
Let me go back to Vanessa. You want to introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Vanessa Mordak.
Is that green light on?
My name is Vanessa Mordak, and I'm the Salem City Councilor for Ward 7, which is Southwest of Salem.
Thank you.
I am Mickey Barney, Salem City Councilor for Ward 8, which is West Salem.
Welcome, Jan Fritz, Marion County Chief Administrator.
Steve Elzinga, County Council.
For Marion County.
Paige Clarkson, I'm the District Attorney.
Does this work now? Oh, there we go. Okay. Come back. Nick Hunter, Sheriff.
Ryan Matthews, Administrator with Health and Human Services.
Trevor Womack, Salem Chief of Police.
I think you might have to actually point them towards your mouth.
Dave Gerbo, Salem Fire Chief.
Dan Attison, City Attorney, and Dave doesn't need a microphone.
Keith Staley, City Manager.
And Irvin Brown, City Councilor.
Deanna Guin, Salem City Councilor.
Shane Matthews, Salem City Councilor.
Lyndon Ishioka, City Councilor, Ward 2.
Julie Hoy, Mayor Salem.
Thank you, everybody, for introducing yourself, and thank you all so much for being here. This is going to be a great conversation to be had tonight, and I hope the first of many to come over the future months of whenever we need to get to some real work. Housekeeping information, the bathrooms are just outside the door to the right. Please mute your mic when not in use. They are sensitive when they work. So CCTV is filming, and we don't want to catch up any side conversations. And if you leave outside the front doors, please use the door on the left. I guess it's out to the street. So I think the right door isn't working entirely. So with that, I'd like to pass it over to Mayor Julie Hoy.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bethel. I'm energized by this gathering and grateful to our partners in the county for agreeing to co-host this work session. Today, we are all facing significant, real challenges. I'm looking forward to the information about to be shared with us and the discussions and understanding to come. It's no secret that Salem is facing some real obstacles, from the budget deficit we are facing to the challenges of healthy, safe communities for everyone to enjoy. We must find a path forward that is sustainable, funding-wise, and practical, within the means of a service system we can control. It's through a spirit of collaboration that we can make Salem a livable community for all who seek to call Salem home. To close, I will reiterate how much I'm looking forward to hearing more about how the county is designed and how it operates in spaces that impact our communities most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think most of us around the table have an idea of what we're going to do here tonight, but I just wanted to provide a brief introduction for those tuning in. There's a difference in service systems between what the counties do and what the cities do. And the City of Salem and Marion County have never hosted a conversation like this to really get on the same learning page as to what our responsibilities look like and how we can work together for all of the residents that live within our jurisdictions. And truth be told, Salem is in Marion County. And so who lives in Salem lives in Marion County, and we find them to be as equally important as you do, and we want to make sure that we are talking the same language and working towards the same outcomes for the same livable, safe communities. So for this conversation tonight, the Board of Commissioners and the leadership of the City of Salem have decided to start in the behavioral health system of care because, as everybody is aware, probably acutely aware, we're living amongst a mental health and addiction crisis, and it's very robust in the city limits of Salem, more so than any of our other jurisdictions across the county. And we think it's important, as commissioners, that our peer leaders in the community understand what our capacity looks like, what our obligations are, and what we need to do to work together to advocate at the state and federal level to gain access to more resources, to gain the outcomes that we believe in together. So Ryan Matthews is our Administrator for the Health and Human Services team, and along the back wall is a very robust display of our wonderful leadership from the Health Department and some great ladies from the City of Salem. And as Ryan leads us through tonight, the goal is to allow him to get through his presentation and then have a discussion. This isn't for necessarily the commissioners to really engage. We want to engage all together and make sure that we all understand when we leave here really what the path forward might be, and then plan for that at a future date. Does anyone have any questions about that? Commissioner Cameron, please.
Did everybody on the back wall introduce themselves?
No, because we don't normally, we're not doing that today. Would you like to do that? They can all come forward and do that.
Just so us in the room know who is back there.
Sure. Please stand up one by one and introduce yourselves.
I would, you don't need to. Whatever.
I'm Chris Epley. I'm Chris Epley, and I work in the Board's Office as Deputy C. The microphone's not working. I'm sorry.
Maybe take Chief Womack's microphone there.
Just have Dave and ask.
That's true. We want to give it to Katrina if it's working. Thank you. There we go.
Hi, I'm Katrina Griffith. I'm the Deputy Director with Marion County Health and Human Services.
Hi, I'm Debbie Wells, Division Director of our Crisis Services.
And I'm Carol Heard, the Division Director for our Addiction Treatment Services.
Please.
Hi, everyone. My name's Courtney Knox-Bush, and I'm the Chief Strategy Officer for the City of Salem.
Krishna Namburi, Deputy City Manager for City of Salem.
Thank you. And truth be told, nothing great in the world would get done if they didn't exist, so we're thrilled you're here. Okay. Anybody else before I hand it over to Ryan? Okay, Ryan, the floor is yours. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Happy to be here and happy to talk about the work of our department to create a better understanding between, you know, City of Salem leadership and what the county is doing. Excuse me. So while we, I know we first, we want to focus a lot on behavioral health, substance use, but I did want to take a step back and look at the statutory roles that our department currently has. So we basically wear four different hats, and so we serve as the Community Developmental Disabilities Program. I'll touch on that a little bit in a moment in a little more detail, but that is basically our roles to providing services and service coordination for those in our community with intellectual or developmental disabilities. We are designated by the Board of Commissioners to perform delegated functions as the local public health authority. So we provide services and perform administrative functions to complete the Marion County statutory roles and responsibilities as the local public health authority. And then we serve and operate as the Community Mental Health Program. That's going to be a lot of the topics that you're going to be most interested in in terms of behavioral health, substance use treatment. We also serve as the ambulance service area. We coordinate and manage the ambulance service area responsibilities. I know the City of Salem also is a partner in that and participates in meetings and is probably used to working with Katrina Griffith, who's our ambulance service area administrator in that role. So that was just to kind of give sort of the breadth and depth of the services that we provide. As we transition to Slide 3, just to touch briefly on our role as the Community Developmental Disabilities Program. This is an entitlement program. It's primarily funded by Medicaid dollars. There are mandated services for eligible individuals that we provide, and it is, and we are responsible for that regardless of resource limitations. So we do not get to cap enrollment. We do not get to limit the services available for individuals with intellectual or developmental disabilities that choose to enroll in services with us. We perform all the intake and eligibility determination. We provide case management and service coordination to make sure people have appropriate housing and living arrangements, that they get access to health care that they need, and that they can seek employment if they choose to be employed. We also have a role in adult abuse investigations, so we, any claims of abuse, whether that is by providers in the community, we follow up and investigate and work with the state on any remedies that may come from that. And just to kind of give some scale in terms of what the size of the services are, in addition to the funding that comes to Marion County for our role as the Community Developmental Disabilities Program, the overall system, we authorize over $500 million per year in payments that go to providers in our communities. Those are residential providers, adult foster home providers, personal support workers that are working in-home to help support our IDP population. So it is in a massive health system that I think is unfortunately often with a population that we don't often think about. They're overlooked and marginalized and not always, you know, advocated for in the best way. And I think when you start to think about the volume of people in our community that fall into this bucket and into this service system, it's really quite massive, and I think most people in our community wouldn't necessarily have visibility to that. We actually wanted to show, we have some data here to just kind of show the growth. So if you look at the chart that we have here on this slide, the top is new increases of enrollment for children. So one of the things that is good is we've done a lot of informational campaigns so people are better adept at sort of identifying early onset issues with intellectual and developmental disabilities in youth. So whether that's autism or other sort of learning disabilities that through schools and just through information and other health care providers, they're getting much better at making referrals and identifying those youth early so that we can get them set up appropriately. So you'll see that since 2018, we've had a 350% increase in child enrollments. These are under 18. And compared to the increase of enrollments in adults, which is about 54%. And then you look at the second chart, just kind of shows the volume of numbers, and this is whom Marion County serves, so this is not any other community providers, but Marion County has the Community Developmental Disabilities Program. In 2018, was serving just under, just over 1,450 individuals. Now we're just under 3,000. So it has been a massive increase year over year. And as I mentioned at the beginning, this is an entitlement service. This is not one where we can close our doors to new enrollments, or we can limit services of those that are entitled to them because it is a Medicaid entitlement benefit. So we have to ramp up staff, ramp up resources, and manage a system that's growing exponentially when quite often funding is not growing at kind of that same rate. So this is, this is something that I know there's a lot of, you know, energy around with the legislature and with certainly with DHS advocating for a fair funding formula for counties, but you can kind of see the growth there and feel like that is a significant strain on our providers and on the system as a whole. So I just kind of wanted to give a little bit of perspective on that because, again, I think that that's not something that we often, you know, focus on, but it's pretty significant.
Ms. Chair?
Sure.
Is it okay to ask a question?
Sure. Is one of your microphones on? Mine wasn't on either. So I think you have to hold your button until the red light on the microphone comes on. Matt is going to help you fix that. City Manager Staley.
I just want to ask Ryan, what the entitlement process looks like? How does, you know, I'm walking around downtown, I see people that I would think would qualify.
Yeah. So we handle intake and eligibility. So what it would be is there would be a screening. There would be a screening to see if they meet certain intellectual thresholds or, you know, or whatever sort of the diagnosis is, if it's an eligible diagnosis and they'd be, and that they're eligible for IDP services, they're enrolled in Medicaid. So this would mean they would need to be, you know, a U.S. citizen and be able to qualify for Medicaid. And at that point, there's what's called a K-Plan process. So we sit down with the family or with the individual, and we develop a robust plan where we get to identify, like, what are all the needs and goals of this individual? And then our goal is to find providers and provide access to services that are in alignment with that plan. And so, and when I say that that's sort of an entitlement is because there's no limitation on resources towards what that plan is. So if somebody wants to seek employment, like they want to, one of their goals is to be a, to seek part-time employment with an employer, then we will work with them to identify transportation needs, to identify whatever support that they might need with that employer, to kind of coach them on job coaching and transition. If there's any accommodations or something that an employer would need to do, there would be a slew of benefits that they would be eligible for. And so, so I think the main thing would be to refer them to Marion County CDDP, so Marion County Health and Human Services, and then we kind of go from there. Because oftentimes, there can be a real blend between whether it's a mental health diagnosis or an intellectual and developmental disabilities diagnosis. If it's mental health, they go into kind of a different funding mechanism, which often, unfortunately, means less resource, less access, because it's, mental health is not an entitlement program. Mental health becomes, can you find a provider? Do you consent to treat?
I see. Thank you.
Yeah.
And just, my personal opinion is mental health should be an entitlement program. And that's a federal change.
Yes.
So it's one of the things that I think we should put a pin in at some point in a real conversation is how do we advocate and lobby pretty significantly through our federal delegation to have this conversation, because those resources should be like any other type of real medical benefit.
Yeah. And I can tell you, there's been conversations about whether, for example, youth mental health should somehow be sort of incorporated into the IDP system, because it would do that very same thing. It would open up an access to funding that they don't currently have because youth mental health is significantly underfunded when we think about it from the health care side.
And when we introduce what Administrator Matthews just talked about, it really gets to the core of what prevention could be, long-term and stabilization of someone's whole health. And it, prevention isn't really a conversation that we have actively anywhere in America, but definitely not here in Oregon, and we need to be. Thank, I have to get used to this tip.
Well, some places do.
So thank you. Keep doing that. To my left, Commissioner Cameron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think, I don't know, Keith, if Ryan, your original question, I see somebody walking down the street, I think they may have a disability, how do I get them into the program? And I think we went right to, they're there, and now they're getting this survey done. How do you, did that answer your question? I see somebody on the street, and I want to give them help, and where do I go? Is that?
It was helpful in understanding what the limitations of the program were.
Is there a phone number?
There is, and we should, we do have a resource table as well with program flyers, isn't it, just around the corner over there? So one of the things I would recommend is grabbing a flyer of each of our programs. That has a pathway into a phone number, a website where you can refer people directly to, and then, and then we follow up and kind of take it from there. So what we need is just kind of that, that direction and handoff to get to, to get to us, and then, then our team can kind of do the rest.
And I believe that as we get through this presentation, your answer, the question to your answer, no, the answer to your question.
It's been a day.
Will really get into the weeds when we talk about our crisis response system and/or who do you pick up the phone and ask a question to besides 911? And Ryan, we'll get into that in a little bit.
Thank you.
Or maybe Katrina, now that she's at the table.
Yeah. Well, I brought my team members to kind of talk about some of their sections as well. So now I want to transition to local public health authority, and I know Katrina was going to kind of walk through some of those slides.
Well, thank you. I was the former Public Health Division Director during COVID, which was the last time. I was before the City of Salem Council, a couple mayors ago. So anyway, I'm happy to be back. So the local public health authority provides several regulatory roles. Every restaurant that you enjoy in Marion County has been inspected. We inspect those twice per year, along with gyms, pools, spas. We also issue birth and death certificates for those events that happen within the first six months of a birth or preceding a death. We also investigate communicable diseases. They could be tick-borne, enteric diseases, foodborne illnesses, respiratory issues, also sexually transmitted infections. We provide vaccines specifically for those who may not have access to care and for those who need vaccines in order to attend school or daycare. We also respond to public health emergencies. We have a robust public health emergency plan, and we learned a lot during COVID, so that plan is tip-top shape.
Battle test.
Yeah. Commissioner Bethel, you mentioned prevention, so we wanted to highlight the work of our prevention, health promotion and prevention team within public health, specifically around mental health promotion and substance use. The opioid settlement dollars allocated specifically funds for prevention. So we just developed a work plan, and we're working with local health care providers to specifically outreach to pregnant women and youth. And so we're really going to focus on working with our health care system to make sure that we are working upstream to prevent, to help promote healthy outcomes for pregnant women and children. So more to come on that. We, you might have seen the signs, "Life is Better With You Here," the pins, the coffee sleeves. We try to do a lot around positive mental health promotion and positive messaging. Next slide, please. You may also have seen our outreach van. We do a lot of testing. We go to various community sites to do STI, HIV, and syphilis testing. We go monthly to arches, navigation center, churches. We also have a nurse home visiting program for babies zero to five and their moms. And then we also have another more targeted program for those with special health care needs for ages zero to 21. We also are one of a few different WIC sites in Marion County, and the WIC program provides a lot of healthy foods and vegetables, which you're probably familiar with the WIC program. We also lead the Community Health Assessment and Improvement Plan. This is an assessment that we conduct every five years, and we just finished our data collection for our community health assessment, and we have a pretty robust website. It's MarionPolkCommunityHealth.org, and so you can see all of the data that we've collected. So it's pretty exciting. That leads into a five-year community health improvement plan, which our previous priorities were housing, mental health supports, and substance use. And so I'm thinking we're probably going to continue working on those issues in the next five years as well.
All right. Thanks, Katrina. So now, I know most of the people here probably are mostly interested in our role in mental health and substance use, so we wanted to shift away from IDP and from public health and kind of focus the rest of our presentation on our Community Mental Health Program. So first, I want to start kind of very high level in terms of key funding sources. So one of the things that is important to remember is funding really drives the work that we're doing, and it drives kind of how we're doing our work. And so currently, we have a contract with Oregon Health Authority for our non-Medicaid population. We also have a coordinated care organization, Pacific Source, that funds our Medicaid population. And our funding levels are about 50/50 between those two, so you can kind of think about, about half of our services are to Medicaid individuals, about half to non-Medicaid. The Pacific Source coordinated care organization has about 136,000 members, but that's Marion and Polk combined, not just Marion County.
Ryan, do you, just, because I don't want to assume everyone that's paying attention knows what Medicaid means, just want to, on the surface, what is that in our community?
Sure. Yeah. So Medicaid would be a federal program, Oregon Health Plan. You may think of it as, that's the Oregon version of a federal Medicaid program. So does that, does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. And then we also do some, we are able to do private insurance, so some individuals who, you know, have income, who do not fall under Medicaid, and certainly do not have a lack of resources, may have Regions, Blue Cross Blue Shield, other private insurance. And we have contracts with those where we can provide services as well, but primarily, they're going to go through their primary care physician or some other sort of panel provider. They tend to not be regular utilizers of our services, but they certainly can be. And then in terms of, you know, funding restrictions, most of our funding comes with some level of, they need to be eligible with an eligible diagnosis or, you know, some other distinguishing characteristics. So whether it's like an SUD diagnosis to qualify for our SUD funding, or a mental health diagnosis to qualify for mental health funding, that's what allows us to enroll people into services and wrap services around them. And then it's also, I think that one of the challenges for us is there's not a lot of flexible funding. A lot of our funding elements is for specific services to a specific population who fits into a specific bucket or criteria. That can be challenging when you think about the general public does not often fit into buckets. We're very complex individuals with complex needs, and sometimes the balance of funding can be a challenge for people. And it means it's challenging for people to navigate and know how to get to the front door, which is probably why many of you are interested in this field, because it's like, how do you, how do you access services? So I want to talk about, this slide was one that we've kind of created because I think this is one of the, sort of the biggest sort of conceptual, I think, challenges in this field, is because I think as City Manager, you had mentioned, you know, you see people on the street. You want to get them into care, you want to get them into services. I think many of us have experienced this, where we walk down the street, or we drive by, and we see people, and we think to ourselves, why are they not getting the services that they need? And the really big factor to that is because there's really, there's sort of the pre-engagement, there's what we see of people who we know need to get to the front door and need to get services. And then there's people who actually engage and agree and consent to services. And there's really significant resource challenges between one or the other. So if we think about pre-engagement, those are really individuals that we sort of anecdotally sort of feel like need services. They are on the street, they are struggling. We know that if they just could either enroll in mental health treatment or enroll in substance use treatment, we could wrap services around them and get them better, more desirable outcomes. The problem is the health care system doesn't really fund that kind of work. There's some very limited programs that we have when we think about pre-engagement. Marion County will celebrate LEED often, and that's really kind of where that fits. It's not necessarily a treatment service. It's really trying to go out and do outreach and education and relationship building, and then hope to guide them into treatment kind of long-term. But that's county general funded. That's not something that we get Medicaid dollars for. It's not something that we get funding from Oregon Health Authority for. We have a program called Prime Plus, which we'll talk about when we get into substance use treatment. That's one where we do a lot of outreach because we have relationships with our hospitals where anybody who overdoses and presents at a hospital, we get a call, we get notified, we respond to them in that moment, and then we offer follow-up conversations where we hope that people at that low point in their life will be willing to accept treatment. But unfortunately, we can't mandate or dictate treatment to people. And so what we really need, the way for us to be able to serve our community and the way for us to be able to provide services to individuals, they have to be willing to walk through that door, they have to be willing to consent to treat. And so anybody that we serve, they have to fill out a, they have to sign a form that says, "We consent to be treated by you as the provider." And that's really what then starts our ability to wrap supports around them and to access funding to provide services for them. So we need, we need consent, and we need active participation for us to be able to provide treatment. And I think that that's, I know that that's something that for our community, when we see issues that we want resolved, I think that's one of the biggest challenges, is kind of understanding that really it still starts with an individual and individual choice. And we have very, there's very, very limited circumstances where you can mandate or dictate treatment through civil commitment or other mechanisms in terms of like inpatient care. So.
Ryan, before you move on, I just, I wanted to add, jump in there and add that the biggest challenge that we're seeing is the fact that people have to consent to treatment. And there's a lot of work being done in this current legislative session around civil commitment, civil commitment for both mental health and addiction health. Mayor Hoy, I have had these conversations, I've participated in meetings with some of the legislators that are carrying some of those bills forward, and this is going to be a really important conversation that we can find common ground on as a county and a city to advocate into the legislature on policy that has to change in order to serve our individuals most in crisis on the streets today. And so I'm just going to invite you now, that if you want to lean into that work, that myself and our Government Affairs staff, Alvin Clausen, can kind of get you up to speed. But it's very quick. I mean, next week, I have three meetings with legislators on this specific topic. There's five bills currently dropped right now on this, and we need to get it all condensed into one that law enforcement and our health system can get behind, along with our disability rights communities that can understand what we're doing and not talk about the fear of long-term permanent institutionalization. We're talking about stabilization, and then what does that look like as a stable reentry into our community with local, appropriately funded systems of care? Sure, Dr. Brown.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So I like how that sounds. I think my question would be, so if you have someone that does not have, you know, the mental wherewithal to sign for themselves, would that be someone in your office that would sign for them, or who would sign for them?
That's a great question, and we are going to.
I was going to say, we will get further into civil commitment in a couple slides, if you don't mind kind of holding that question, because there are like two-party petitions, and there are ways to pursue civil commitment. Yes.
I just was opening the doorway for you to ask that question, and stay tuned.
Perfect, because I only got like 101 questions.
Yeah. No, no, no. It's a good question, and we do want to get to that, but I, but in terms of the sequence of order, we, our next conversation we wanted to have was with Phil Blair, our outpatient Division Director, to talk about our outpatient mental health system.
Thank you, Ryan. So as Ryan was talking about, we serve children zero to 17, so we generally see parents and children for more dyadic therapies from zero to five. And then from five to about 17, we do more individual and family therapy. So most families have to be Medicaid-eligible, and we do generally see everyone on Medicaid, and we don't specialize in any particular therapy. We're more generalist in relation to children's services. So we do mental health assessments, we do treatment planning, we do individual and family therapy, group therapy.[1779.83] then from five to about 17, we do more individual and family therapy. So most families have to be Medicaid-eligible. And we do generally see everyone on Medicaid, and we don't specialize in any particular therapy. We're more generalist in relations to children's services. So we do mental health assessments, we do treatment planning, we do individual and family therapy, group therapy. We do a lot of skills building, we do a lot of networking with schools. We work with the Juvenile Department and lots of the community partners that work with individuals to keep the families safe and wrapped around. On the adult mental health side, Ryan was talking about more specifically, the SPMI population, severe and persistently mentally ill population, that the county serves. We focus primarily on people with, with diagnoses of more schizoaffective disorders, bipolar with more hospitalizations, and people coming out of the state hospital. And so we work with people at the highest level, and we don't generally serve people with regular mental health on the adult side. Because there is supposed to be a large net of mental health providers in the community that are serving adults, at least historically. So as we know, there's a shortage of everything across the board right now. But the SPMI population is one of the populations that gets harder to serve, as you go into community regular mental health services. And so the county does a really great job of providing those services. And so within that, I'm going to go over some numbers on the next slide. On the adult outpatient side, we serve about 985 people. 8.75% are transient or homeless at intake. Our assertive community team works with about 75 individuals, and about 18% are transient or homeless at intake. Our psychiatric secure review board, those are people who are found guilty, but by reasons of insanity, are mandated to us for sort of monitoring until they, their sentences. We can go into that a little bit more. I see a question coming in from Dr. Brown.
I'm going to hold it.
Okay. And we do supportive employment and supportive education to help people get back on their feet and into recovery. And we have about 166 individuals that we work with there. And our choice model, which is exceptional needs care coordination, is about 122, 24 people. And those are people transitioning from the state hospital for various reasons, or transitioning from adult foster homes, at different higher levels of care within the county. And our children's outpatient, we serve about 775 individuals. And our wrap services, which is our intensive wraparound services to care coordinate those individuals, or youth who are actually struggling with multi-systemic issues, they're usually with the juvenile department, they're with schools, and they're having lots of problems elsewhere. So we wrap around them to make, keep them safely in the community. And then our early assessment and support alliance is an early psychosis program. So people who are young individuals, 12 to 25, actually it's 27 now, who are in their first psychotic episode, can enter into this program for two years, and then we really wrap around them and their families, to try to keep the family as intact as possible throughout these, this time. And then the next slide goes to our crisis center.
So was there a question that we didn't get to?
Oh, no, I mean, I couldn't wait.
Are you sure? I mean, if it's about this, you're welcome to ask.
Okay. So on that particular slide, you have those numbers, and that's strictly just for last year, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Will we, will we be able to see, like, down the road, what was two years back, three years back? Will we be able to see that progression, or no?
I mean, we didn't have that prepared for today, but that's, that's information we certainly have. I do think there's always, it depends when you start, because if you, if you get into like the COVID years, you know, your numbers are definitely lower, and we've kind of ramped up, you know, to that point. But yeah, we can definitely look at, you know, whether that's a, you know, a follow-up report or something. We're, we're happy to share.
We can also break down by zip code.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can, we can get more information just from year to year. But yeah, we were trying to focus on, kind of in a particular year, this is kind of the volume.
Okay. And for the wraparound services, 229, so that's 229 young people, correct?
Correct.
And so Chair Lady said that you do have that by zip code? Is that by zip code?
We could.
We track all of our clients by zip code, if they have one.
And so, and so what are some of the, I would say, some of the brackets? Like, when you do, when you disaggregate your data, what are the, what do you use to disaggregate it? Is that age, zip code, what do you use?
So it depends, so it depends on what group we're coming to. So we actually do outreach by school district. So we actually target more this, like Salem-Kaida School District.
Okay. So, so, so if you're partnering with Salem-Kaida School District, and if I said, "Oh, can you tell me how many students of color?", would you be able to tell me that?
Yes.
We do have all the demographics, yes.
Okay, perfect.
It's, it's all based on the information they're willing to provide.
Because they may not provide.
They may not. We, so we track everything that you can dream of, if they provide it. And we are very good at data, because I'm a commissioner that's very interested in data.
Well, we would have the data, that we would have, anybody that's enrolled in services with us, we would have the demographics in our EHR.
Well, the school district would have their data. But we can track what they will provide us.
One thing-
Because sometimes the school district may not give it to you, so now you-
Well, we're not asking the school district. We're asking the service, the individual we're serving, because they're our client.
One thing, Dr. Brown, I want to kind of share, watching this conversation, I'm sort of chuckling. These guys or gals are service providers, so they don't see 229 as a number. They see this individual and that individual. And that, so that could be part of the reason why this conversation is a little bit funny, is because they, they don't think of things as aggregates or disaggregates. They, I know Phil and his team thinks of this child coming into my office, getting treatment. And that's kind of the, the way that we do our work here, is we try to treat the person in front of us.
And because of our funding sources, we're required to collect certain types of information, so we do ask. But it's not always guaranteed, and we don't force information in order to receive service, because service is most important to meet the needs of the person.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure, Mayor Hoyer. Just want to point, this number are those who engaged.
Yeah, these are people that we actively serve, which means they, they enrolled in services with us, they were, they received treatment, you know, from us. So yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily speak to total need, total community need, or even total individuals served, when you start thinking about all the multitude of providers, you know, that are out there. This is just specifically that enrolled in services with us.
Thank you. Any other questions? I was supposed to look left. Great. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Cameron?
Oh, yes.
Well, Ryan, you just said, and I think along Dr. Brown's questions, is there a database out there that we would be able to get from private providers, the amount of people that are enrolled by zip code or in Marion County, so we would know what the population is?
Our CCO would be the best bet, because they have agreements with all providers. But again, that's going to be for their membership, so that would be Medicaid population. Now, if you start getting into private insurance, other, you'd have to, it's not all, it's much harder. The state, in theory, has a program where they're, they track that, MMIS, that we have to report everything into. The problem is, I've never actually seen anybody getting any information out. We, we have a lot of requirements about submitting information that we have to transmit out of our EHR into that system. Nobody, even at the state level, really knows how to get any information out of it, so.
And just to be clear, EHR is the electronic health records system that we put our data into. And when you say the state, you mean the Oregon Health Authority?
Correct.
Yes. Just, so everybody's on the same page?
For sure.
Thank you.
And so, yeah, so we definitely have less about, less about total system need, although you could, you could draw some trends around, like our, our Community Health Assessment and some of the publications that we have. Like, that, that really does start to get a total population needs and some of those kinds of things. So you, we, we definitely have some information, but not maybe at this level of detail around specific programs. Okay, so I wanted to transition-
Oh, I'm sorry, Ryan. Go ahead, Councilor Brown.
Thank you very much. I don't know if this is working.
It is.
The green light's on your way.
Okay, okay. And, and thank you, Councilor Brown, for asking that, because I did want to know, as a data analyst, what demographics you collect and quantify on a regular basis. Is this available on the website somewhere?
It, it's not. So it, you know, we, we run reports out of our electronic health record, and it is protected health information, so we don't, we don't necessarily post it out there, although in an aggregate, it's fine for us to display. So it would tend to be, usually if we got a request out, they wanted, you wanted to know some demographics, it would be potentially a specific program, over a date range. How many people did you serve? What's the, what's the age ranges, and what, what are the different ethnicities? And male, female, and every other kind of demographic that you can think. We, we track, you know, pretty much anything that would seem measurable or important, so it is there. It's just a matter of what audience wants to see, and how you want to kind of break down that information. But yeah, but yes, we do have it available. And I'm sure we can, you know, if there's, if there's some really tangible, specific information that the city council was, is interested in, I think relay that to us in some way, shape, or form, and we'll figure out what we can do to kind of address that, either in a future meeting, or future discussion, if there's a series of these, or in any other kind of follow-up venue. We're, we're happy to share what we can.
Okay, thanks. I mean, I know you cover a huge area, so I think of changes over time regionally, you know, versus population, where you're seeing things that are popping up more, whatever. So thank you.
We track all of that.
Yes. And we've got some really talented data people that love to have an issue like that to, to attack. It can take them some time, because even though we have access to data, I do want to, it's, it oftentimes still takes some, some work to kind of get it to kind of what you need, sensible, and to, to make sure that you're validating the data from here to here. So it can take a little bit of work, so it's not necessarily the click of a button, but it doesn't mean we don't have it and we can't get it, so.
And sometimes the way the information is displayed is regulated. So the Oregon Health Authority is an example during COVID, was a interesting partner, maybe more of a challenging partner for the local public health authorities, to be able to disseminate information on, like, where the outbreaks were. Specifically in 2021, when I became a commissioner, I can attest to the triumphant work that Katrina and her team went through to change the way Oregon Health Authority saw the dissemination of information, so we could publish on our website readily available data for the public to understand, so that they could make protective measures for themselves, because obviously it was such a big deal. In this particular space, because it is mostly confidential information, there still is regulations around that. And for me, as a commissioner in my policy space, what's important to me is that we're providing our best resources into the individual's needs and work, versus publishing information for the public to monitor and manage. We meet with them often, and those meetings are available for the public to listen into, to gain access to kind of what we're looking for, and how that's being disseminated. I don't really, I, I'm not interested in funding a position that only focuses on kind of putting out information versus just serving the population, if that makes sense. Yeah. Commissioner Wells?
One piece of information I think is important, one data point. Ryan, what's the caseload for our therapists and adult and childrens? Or maybe Phil has the latest numbers.
I think it's still hovering on the six.
So currently for a youth-
Phil, you'll have to either be on the microphone or route it through Ryan.
So for youth, it's, for the youth therapists, it's generally 45 to 55 right now. And for the adults, it's 65 to about 75.
So just to, like, let that sink in, each therapist is treating between 50 and 75 people. These are not underworked individuals.
For sure.
And we're hiring, FYI.
Yes.
We are hiring.
Yes. Councilor Matthews?
I was just going to ask, kind of on point with Commissioner Willis's point of how kind of the staffing and everything else this takes, what is kind of your, I guess, process timeline for when you actually get someone in, what's your intake process timeline, to be able to say, "We have someone here that's interested, and obviously we need to capitalize now"? How long, how quickly can we actually get them serviced?
Yeah. We didn't touch on same-day access, really, did we?
No, we didn't.
That's a good one.
So for our youth programs, we actually have same-day access. So, so if youth that have Medicaid want to get in today, and they can fill out all the paperwork by 11 o'clock today, they can have an appointment, a mental health assessment, and a treatment plan by what? By the end of 1:00 appointment, same day. So I know that everybody can't make it to the same day. So we keep the referral packet for 30 days, and they could call back tomorrow morning before 11:00 and say, "I'm ready today", and they'll have an appointment at 1:00 the ne, that same day.
And that's a change that Phil instituted. So he's, he's not bragging to you, but I'm bragging about him, is that was not the case before he got his position.
And it's not a standard of care across the state. It's something that we, as a team, really believe in, to be the most responsive need for our adolescent population.
On the adult side, it's different. So on the adult side, we, we try to get everyone in within seven days. So.
Thanks, we'll take it.
And actually, we do, on our flyers, they actually do have a QR code that will actually send you the link for all that information for same-day access, as well as the other access for adult services.
Our goal is for you to leave here today an X, a walking expert, to, to help people understand how to engage.
I'm going to post that QR code on my chest.
It's a T-shirt. I see the T-shirt.
Exactly.
It'll scan you.
Yeah, yes. I mean, if you take my picture, you might as well do something with it.
Love it.
Before I go back, then Debbie comes up, is there any other outpatient questions?
You might want to take that traveling microphone with you, just in case. The one that's, yeah, thank you.
All right. So we'll let Debbie get her way back. So yeah, then we're going to talk about our behavioral health crisis services, which slightly different than outpatient, definitely not, not scheduled in the same way. So, you know, this is much more community outreach. And then I'm sure people are aware of our Behavioral Health Crisis Center that's at the, on the grounds of Salem Health. You may know it as Psychiatric Crisis Center, but go ahead, turn it over to Debbie.
So yes, we are in the middle of a rebrand, or the beginning of a rebrand. We are changing the name from PCC to our Behavioral Health Crisis Center. We kind of want to promote a more welcoming feeling. We understand the term psychiatric can be a little bit intimidating to some. So we want to make sure that we are providing a good picture of the wide spectrum of services that we're able to provide out of the crisis center. The center is staffed with master's level clinicians. We will see anybody who comes through the front door, regardless of age, insurance ability to pay. Everybody is welcome to receive an assessment with us. And after that assessment, we can refer to a wide array of services. Our building is very small, but we run a lot of programs out of that little building. So anybody that hasn't seen it, we have diversion programs, which include our brief resource enhancement and support programs. That's short-term case management, brief therapy to help get people stabilized and into long-term services. Because once you get into long-term services, your chances of stability maintaining are much greater, obviously. We are also the liaison. We work with the DA's office and the state hospital.
Can you just move to the microphone, please?
Sure. Thank you. Yeah. We work as a liaison between the DA's office and the state hospital for our aid and assist population. We conduct the legal skills training for our individuals in community restoration. We also have a Woodburn location. We do have limited hours up there right now. We are only 8 to 5 Monday through Friday, and 1 to 5 on the weekends. But we are definitely trying to encourage more folks to access our services up there. We provide crisis respite services. This is just people who come in, who have an assessment that need a, a nice, safe, warm place to stay for the night. Maybe we're trying to get them to an appointment in the morning, try to get them connected. These are often unhoused individuals who don't have a place to be. They don't have a phone. If they were not to stay somewhere, we wouldn't be able to find them in the community the next day. So we have respite sites that we can put them in. We also run a Youth and Family Crisis Services Team out of the crisis center. We conduct suicide risk assessments in the school district. So that team consists of five folks. We have a family support partner on that team that has been recruited for as well, which we're looking forward to, because I think that that will help us connect with folks greatly. And the civil commitment team was brought up earlier. So we do have the civil commitment team under our services. We have commitment investigators who will investigate notifications of mental illness. Oftentimes, you'll hear those called either two-party petitions, or a hospital hold. So our staff will go out and investigate those, determine whether or not somebody needs to go to court. And we will follow that process. Our law enforcement mental health collaboration teams, again, these are teams that people are often very interested in. We do have a jail mental health team, so we have qualified mental health professionals, as well as mental health associates, who can be available to the adults in custody at our Marion County jail facility. And we respond to those requests. Our community crisis outreach services for youth team, that's a mental health professional and a juvenile probation officer who receive police reports on youth in the community that appear to have a mental health component. We go out and we connect with those folks to try to figure out what is causing that law enforcement contact, and try to figure out if there's ways that we can lessen that contact. That's been very successful. Our community response teams, this was a pivot after some language changes in our contract from our mobile crisis response team. So many people know about our MCRT, which is our law enforcement. We are co-located with law enforcement in a police vehicle, where we can respond to 911 calls in the community. We did have to pivot from that, so we created our community response teams, which is two staff, either a qualified mental health professional, or a qualified mental health associate, and a certified recovery mentor, who can respond to calls into the community. It's, the model is originally to come from 988 calls, but we have actually expanded that to be able to respond to anybody that calls into the crisis center. As long as we can work to guarantee our staff safety, we will respond in the community to those calls. We also have, we do have one mobile crisis response team being re-implemented right now. We're in that process with our Marion County Sheriff's Office to bring back one of those teams. And then our community outreach team, that's going to be a mental health associate, who is going to work to provide mental health supports. That's a part of the House Bill 4002 deflection services. And we will be doing that with the sheriff's office as well. The next slide is just some numbers. Our, our respite numbers, you can see that we served 111 individuals in respite last year. Our mobile crisis team, the, the numbers here, the 456 individuals, we had our mobile crisis response team, so that's the law enforcement co-location for the first quarter of last year. And then April 1- And then April one is when we had to pivot. So this is a combination of both those teams. So we did serve four hundred and fifty-six individuals with six hundred and thirty-two service episodes. There's some phone information that shows you our crisis calls, how many calls we did receive at the crisis center, how many individuals we served. We had one thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine individuals that came into the crisis center a total of two thousand nine hundred and seven times. The youth and family numbers are up there as well. For our pre-commitment services of those, we have about a seventy-five to seventy-six percent commitment rate. Some people do appreciate having that information.
Can you talk about the civil commitment process? I think there's a question about how that works.
Yeah, how it works. So depending on the avenue, so they're, both forms are called a notification of mental illness, but one is known commonly as a two-position hold or a two-provisor hold. So if somebody goes into the hospital, a practitioner such as a licensed doctor and another clinician have the ability to put an individual on a notification of mental illness because they have deemed that they are unsafe to either themselves, to somebody else, or they're so grossly incapable of taking care of their basic personal needs that they feel as though they need to be in a hospital setting. Our investigators will go out and investigate that hold, make the determination as to whether or not they agree that that's necessary if the criteria is met. If so, we will go to court or we will recommend court, I should say. We, as investigators, recommend court. The judicial process takes over after that. If it's a two-party petition, we will, that's when individuals are in the community. So they might be anywhere. They may be at their own home, they may be unhoused. We will go and try to find them wherever they are, and we will, again, make a determination as to whether or not they're able to keep themselves safe, keep others safe. The one difference between those two forms is that for a notification of mental illness that is considered a two-party petition, we do not have the ability to take people into custody for inability to care.
Does either the district attorney or the sheriff want to unpack the end of that for anyone?
Well, I think what I might add to that is the civil commitment process right now is significantly hampered by limitations at the Oregon State Hospital. So we are just limited by the fact, the Oregon State Hospital, in fact, there was a hearing yesterday, if anybody wants to go back and watch it, it's available on OLIS, at the legislature that talked about sort of the civil commitment process and the fact that state hospitals cannot even admit those people for civil commit purposes. So for the most part, we have been unable for, Debbie, probably four, five years now to send anyone really with a significant mental illness via the civil commit process to the state hospital. What that means is the burden falls locally on our county services, on Ryan and Debbie and their folks. So when it comes to civil commitment, not only do we have a crisis sort of at population at the state hospital just because of sheer capacity, but the burden that we have to meet in order to actually civilly commit someone has gotten harder and harder and harder over the last, I would say, decade. It's certainly significantly harder over my twenty-five years of experience in the DA's office. So what I mean by that is we have really some adverse case law that makes it very difficult for us to meet the standard for inability to care for yourself such that you are a danger to yourself or you are violent and a danger to others because of mental disease or defect. So the statutory standard is on paper, it seems appropriate, but it has been interpreted over a number of years by a Court of Appeals of the Supreme Court to be very, very high, meaning that somebody has to be very, very sick in the moment at the time of the hearing, basically displaying very obvious signs of mental illness to the judge in the moment in order to be civilly committed. So the fact that we even have a commitment percentage is pretty impressive because what that means is we are, A, treating very, very sick people, but we are also identifying those cases that actually appropriately meet the burden. But even when we do that, those folks are still in our community and have to be treated via these services because the state is, I'll just say it, Chair Bethel, just bailing us on that particular front. They're just not doing their job in getting people into the state hospital, so.
Thank you. Is that helpful? Yeah, DA Clarkson. And then on the transport piece, there's two components to that in the civil commitment process. I think the sheriff can touch on some of that because this is kind of a prelude to the discussion that we are having with the legislature, and I think it's important for you to hear about it today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the second part where Debbie left off is they can't take these folks into custody. And so that burden comes to the sheriff's office or comes to law enforcement to take these folks into custody, and it really is something that everybody needs to understand. The word that we're using right now is civil. And when we talk about civil, we are not talking about criminal. And so even when we have a judge that signs a civil warrant, I cannot use force to serve that civil warrant. And a lot of this, and the DA brought it up a minute ago when we're talking about recency. Recency is imperative to us. I cannot go and talk about a person that three months ago was a danger to others. Three months ago, a danger to others is not recognized when we come to the Ninth Circuit Court, federal district court, or if we talk about SCOTUS. And so for us to be able to transport these folks, even if they have a warrant, they've got to voluntarily commit, or I don't want to say commit. They've got to voluntarily agree, that's fair. They've got to voluntarily agree to essentially go with us. Otherwise, we have to walk away from that situation. And we can think about it in this sense, when somebody wants someone to get help through the state hospital, the last thing that they want for that individual is for that individual to get hurt in the process of trying to get them help. So it sounds counterproductive, but this can be often very frustrating for families and families that have now gone through the two-party or they've gone through a number of things to get this warrant or this now commitment for their loved family member, and we can't force this person still to go do this. And so we've employed several things to make some of these work. We certainly can't go into structures or other things like that, but we've had to kind of sit out and wait and use special teams to get this person into an open environment or something else like that. So there are things that we can do, but it's important to understand the difference between civil and criminal and what that does to law enforcement and where we're bound by case law when it comes to using force.
Thank you, Chair. Also, this isn't like restricted to the sheriff's office. This is very much a police department issue as well. In fact, I've spoken with Chief Womack over the last year about circumstances that are occurring in Salem that are very time-consuming and challenging for Salem police to handle because there's very sick individuals, not just on the street, but also in homes that are being called on nine-one-one by family members that, as I'm talking, I think you're like, yeah. There's one particular situation that Salem PD and myself have been navigating with our health team for well over a year, and it's really disheartening to know that in this young person's perspective, we cannot get them any help because they don't want to go anywhere and we can't get them anywhere. And the burden on local police when someone calls nine-one-one is high. I don't know if, Chief Womack, you've ever pulled that type of a call report and shared it with the counselors. I would welcome it if you did because I really want to bring them with me to legislature to talk about real life experiences in the city to help bring this law forward to change. Because I think it's super important that you all understand what your citizens are going through and the challenges that we face in the healthcare system and in the law enforcement system to help them live the best life they can. Were you leaning in to say something?
Well, I just wanted to clarify something because I think this is the reality and I think, I just want to make sure that everyone is clear about this, which what this can mean, does mean, is someone can be deemed a danger to themselves or others. And even if they voluntarily get into the sheriff's car, the sheriff has no place to actually take them to where they can be stabilized. And even if someone is deemed to be a danger to themselves or others, if they don't want to get into the sheriff's car, there's nothing anybody can do. So I think when we talk about the civil commitment process being broken, when most people think about someone being civilly committed, they think this person, well, I think of it like my grandma. My grandma had serious dementia and said, okay, grandma, it's time to go to the doctor. And she would say, I don't know who you are, I'm not going anywhere with you. It was like two things we didn't do. We didn't like throw cuffs on her and drag her out by her heels, but we also didn't say like, okay, I guess we're not going to the doctor today. Like, that's not what happened, right? Like, I care about my grandma, she's not in her right mind. My grandma, we're going to the doctor, you know? And I might have to sit there for a while and I might have to kind of cajole her and I might have to be like, I'm not just going to walk away and leave her. But I think that's the reality of what we're talking about here. We're talking about people who are really sick, they're not in the right mind, they can't make good decisions for themselves, and our law says that everybody involved in this process, even after a court determination that this person is really sick and a danger to themselves or others, everybody just has to walk away from that individual. And that's wrong. That's not what people who care about other people do.
Thank you, Commissioner. One second.
If I could just, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. Counselor Matthews.
And this may have been answered already and I just may have missed it, but so you meet all the threshold of kind of the civil commitment process, you go to court, you have the civil commitment order actually placed. I guess I wasn't clear. So once that happens, would they go to the state hospital at that point? They wouldn't, they would stay in a local jurisdiction? And then would that be the Behavioral Health Crisis Center that they would go to? What facility would they actually go to in our community?
In our community, they would go to Salem Health Psychiatric Medicine Center. If there's room, that's their acute care setting. And then we do go out from there. So then we will move to Portland, then we will go to Corvallis if we need to make placement.
In the future, there'll be a few more beds online in our community through the SRTF that's being developed over in East Salem. Still not enough. All the hands are now coming up. DA Clarkson.
I was just going to add, which probably goes without saying, I think you're all probably thinking down the road, what's important about what the sheriff mentioned about the very clear distinction between civil and criminal is if we are not able to help these folks in the civil process, which we are failing at, even given all of these services that are very well provided, in general, if we fail at that, what we end up doing is just waiting for someone to commit a crime.
Right.
And then we criminalize that behavior, we criminalize that mental illness, and then sometimes it is a really horrendous violent crime. And so we've created victims, we've created families, we've created a ripple effect. So our failure on the civil commitment front, and I'm using the royal we because I think everyone at this table agrees, we've tried a lot of things, but because we're failing on that civil commitment front, we are using the criminal justice system to treat mental illness, and that's inappropriate and it's wrong and it's not compassionate for anybody. So when Chair Bethel talks about what's happening at the legislature, that is the only place that this can be fixed with regard to civil commitment. And our mental health process as an organ, it has to start at the state level. They are statutorily required to provide these services. And so when they fail us, it is only a trickle-down problem and we end up with a significant number of folks in the criminal system, which is why you're seeing now, you probably see on the news, we have an explosion of population, the aid and assist population. So those are individuals of the state hospital that are not well enough to aid and assist in their own defense, and they are taking up the vast majority of the population at our state hospital. So that is who is sitting in our state hospital, meaning we cannot serve those folks that civilly could be there and get help before they ever get into a criminal system.
Well, as we're talking about this, I'm just reminded by what inspired me so deeply to connect with our county, and that's to understand how we can better help the folks that are in need. I come from a point of experience, tried to care for a family member who's been addicted for years, who's been homeless for years, brought that person into my home. That person had tremendous amount of issues, tremendous amount of challenge for our family, ended up barricaded into a room in our home, completely out of control, being very destructive and violent. Police came and did what they could, but he was by definition not a danger to himself or others. He still doesn't have the help that he needs. He's in some kind of place in Portland called the Joyce House where there's no barrier and no reason to get help. That incident in our home was at least two years ago. Us as a family, we're still dealing with that. And that's the point of pain that brought me to such a serious place of trying to get answers about how to help to fix this problem. And I just wanted to say that, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hoi. You're not alone in that situation, and I'm sorry you're experiencing it. Ryan.
All right.
Should we ask a question now or no?
Still, we still have more presentation. Do you, is it on that particular topic?
Oh, it is.
No, right ahead of it, please. Okay, well, we only have, how about we have a couple more slides and you just jot all your hundred questions down and we will get to you. And I'll stay late if I have to.
Well, they won't just be, it'll be for Matthews too, because whatever I don't.
I see you're taking notes.
Whenever I don't ask, he will.
Okay, well, I'll still stay late.
Okay, so we'll touch, I know we're, we've got a little bit of a time check, but we'll do our best. So we'll go through our housing services and support as well here. Let's get Trina back and talk about that.
All right, so housing services and supports, this is an area that is growing within Marion County Health and Human Services. We currently provide support to those with behavioral health conditions, substance use disorders, and intellectual or developmental disabilities, which Ryan talked about earlier. And we also do support some families who have an open child welfare case or are on Let's see, a few of these areas that are growing are around the health-related social needs. You might have heard this recently with Oregon Health Plan and the Medicaid, new Medicaid waiver. This is for the Medicaid population, which serves those who are current, our families at risk of homelessness and helps support with their rental and utility assistance for six months. And we also do provide some tenant education courses to help people learn how to live This data, I believe, is from 2023, so it's a little old. It's just, it's a little old. We're still wrapping up 2024. And so here's some of our housing programs. At the top, you see Horizon House. This is a twenty-four-seven facility that supports folks who often step down from the Oregon State Hospital. We have three rental assistance programs for our families, adults, and youth. And then I mentioned the health-related social needs. This is a brand-new program that just opened up, which is why there's not a much of data in that row. We are hope getting referrals, though, to help support those families on Medicaid. The DHS program that supports families getting housed who have an open child welfare case. And then we do receive some preference vouchers from the Marion County Housing Authority and Salem Housing Authority.
Yeah, and I think it's important to think, I mean, having a Medicaid benefit support housing needs, I mean, that's completely new. It's really relatively unique to, when you think nationally, and that was something Oregon got added to their Medicaid waiver. And we see that over the next year or two, we really hope as that program sort of becomes more well-known and as the infrastructure kind of gets built so that it functions a little bit better than it does, you know, at this current moment when everybody's sort of trying to figure it out as we're, you know, flying the plane, so to speak, we're building the planes, we're flying it. But the fact that people can get that initial utility assistance and housing assistance, rental assistance to actually pay for stable housing to hopefully then allow them to seek treatment and to stabilize, you know, already with a stable living situation, the fact that that can become part of basically their health benefit is really unique, it's really exciting, it's something that can hopefully drive a lot of positive outcomes for people, but it's still very early on at this point. But I think long-term, that's an area we really want to focus on and develop. And I think that as it becomes more well-known and we can really partner in that, I think that's, again, another area where through like the Navigation Center or other means, we can get referrals that might make a lot of sense, you know, when we start thinking about how to connect people to resources to get them long-term stable housing.
What this doesn't talk about, and naturally probably shouldn't, but I just want to add, is that through the Health Department and through a program that the Board of Commissioners oversees, our CDBG program, we've invested a fair amount of money into private organizations who provide beds for stabilization for addiction. Treatment, they're not providing treatment, but Soaring Heights is one of the partners that we've invested in and have purchased, helped them purchase three of their homes. We also operate Her Place and we brought on His Place two years ago now? Has it been two years?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, in Woodburn. And we're exploring other options to have supported services housing for the population that we serve because we don't have enough beds anywhere when it comes to the service system of care, and there's also not enough money. Like, the state's not, the state typically is the one who's passing those dollars down to counties in order to do what the local communities need, and that isn't happening. And how the state looks at the metric or how they're determining what the local needs are is not from what I believe is an informed approach from the local organizations who do that work, the counties. So there's a bit of a tug-of-war as to how we bring those services online and where those dollars come from. It's no different than kind of the decisions that the City Council made in the last few years with one-time funding to try to meet a certain need, to like to fill a gap. We have many gaps, but it's technically the obligation of the state to find those resources to give them to us to meet those community needs, and we just haven't. and we just haven't, and frankly, had a great partnership with the state for a very long time. And it's not just Marion County, it's literally every county in Oregon.
Question?
Please.
So, so we know we're in a long session. And so my question is about the money, how it trickles down. So, so last short session, we know that the governor, she asked for, and she got, what, 300-plus million?
Mm-hmm.
And then the year before, for the long session, she got equivalent to almost the same amount, so over, close to half a billion dollars.
Yep.
And with her current budget, it's up there again.
Mm-hmm.
So out from that particular money, how much did the county get?
Well, that money through the executive orders actually didn't get handed to the county. We didn't receive any of those dollars.
Zero funds?
Zero funds from the executive order went to the county. It went to NGOs or CBOs, whatever you want to call them, in our community. The way that system was designed, and this is a much longer conversation that I should have with you, and your peers will get up to speed being on the Homeless Alliance, but this continuum of care is the bulk recipient of those funds and the distributor of those funds. So in this community, Community Action Agency received a bulk of those funds for this region.
The city of Salem also got some of those funds as well.
Okay, I-
For homelessness?
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't know about that. But I know exactly about what happened at the Homeless Alliance, because I've served on that board. And I'd have to go back and look at the last executive order to see exactly where those allocations went, but it's easily found. But it didn't come to the county to answer your specific question.
Yeah, because now we're at the same place again.
That's right.
Right? We're still gonna get millions of money.
Is your microphone on, sir?
It's on. We're still gonna get millions of money. My question would be like, okay, what are we actually gonna get? What's the county gonna get?
The county's not getting any of that money still. It's going through the same process. That's her requested process. The legislature could change that with input, but so far, I haven't found that to be a welcome conversation.
And currently, do we have people on both sides of the aisle that can help us get this across the finish line, or no?
No.
I don't think so. And the Madam Governor, she's not willing to play with us yet?
I have a great relationship with the governor, but she has a thought process that she believes is the right process, and it doesn't meet the process of the services that we provide to be able to create accountable stability with data-informed systems.
Okay, well said. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
So I didn't-
Okay, so this is a really good visual representation of the services that we provide at Marion County Health and Human Services related to housing. And you can see that they're spread throughout all of our behavioral health divisions, crisis, addiction, adult behavioral health. You'll hear a little bit more from Carol, who's up next, to talk about addiction treatment services and those resources that Commissioner Ethel mentioned. So we, we like this visual because it represents, you know, we're with people throughout that continuum of housing supports with a goal of getting to independent living. So our behavioral health folks, they really work hard to get people in the right setting for their health needs. So like referrals into secure residential treatment facilities, foster treatment homes, addiction treatment, they have some barrier removal funds, and operate Two Homes, His Place and Her Place, with our place coming on board very soon. We're really excited about that. Our crisis program, which you heard from Debbie, we have some respite, and also some transitional treatment beds. And the most independent living supports that we do offer, I just mentioned, through the health-related social needs and the Medicaid waiver. You can see some of the capacity that we have up there. It might not seem like very much, but, you know, we work really hard to make sure that people have really good long-term outcomes as it relates to housing support. So we're really proud of the folks that we're able to, to help through this process.
And as was mentioned, these are not paid for by, you know, emergency housing funds. These are paid for really out of treatment dollars. So we have to take some of our resources that really, we need to provide treatment and to provide services, but the reality is, the best way for us to provide supportive treatment to individuals is to make sure that they have housing resources and stable housing, so that we can, you know, treat the person and make sure that they're not, you know, living on the street or unavailable for us to access. So, so we have to kind of build this capacity within our own system. It's not something that's specifically funded. It really is built out of treatment dollars and out of, out of local resources, so.
Could you maybe talk a little bit about His Place and Her Place? Because I think, I think it's important.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
And our next, we're heading into addiction. It's a perfect segue. It's the perfect segue.
We're very excited for Carol to come up here. I apologize if I stole your thunder five minutes ago.
Yeah, so we'll, so we'll shift into addiction treatment services next. Carol.
Evening, everyone. So the services provided by addiction treatment services, we serve anybody who is, for our adult programs, anybody over the age of 18, with or without insurance. That is an opportunity that we have currently through funding received from the state through Measure 110. And then we are also able to see adolescents 12 or older with or without insurance as well. And we currently provide those services out of our Woodburn office. Same-day assessments are available, but we can also schedule them out further. Our outpatient treatment services include screenings, assessments, individual and group therapy, mentor services, and case management. Referrals to those programs can be through, they can be self-referred, it can be through probation, child welfare. A lot of our referrals come through DUI referrals. We also have our medication-assisted treatment program, which is a evidence-based practice of opioid antagonist medication in addition to treatment. Our Her Place and His Place programs are, they're great programs. We have, Her Place is for pregnant or parenting mothers with children ages five or under who can live with them at the house, and it is treatment and transitional housing with onsite childcare. And then it's, His Place is a similar program, but for fathers. And again, it is seven beds for the parent, and then we have the space for up to two children for each parent for ages five and under. We have our Prime Plus program, which are certified recovery mentors who work with those who are at risk of overdose, or those who have presented at the hospital with an overdose or urgent cares. And the certified recovery mentors help connect them to either treatment services or to recovery resources if they are not yet ready to connect to treatment. The SOAR program, which is a partnership between Schmeckata Community College and Community Corrections, are individuals who participate, are transitioning back into the community by learning new skills and other ways of thinking. We also have an option, an opportunity to have supported employment for individuals in recovery from substance abuse. This, again, is a program that we have available within our addiction treatment services through the Measure 110 funding. And for the Measure 110 funding that we received back in 2022, allowed us to increase our capacity and access to substance use treatment. It allowed us to add about 16 physicians to our addiction treatment services programs. Four of those were actually certified recovery mentors that are also working with our crisis center. So, and we also partner with other agencies, including law enforcement partners, to accept referrals in support of House Bill 4002. We also have a certified addictions counselor and two certified recovery mentors who are working with Restore Court, and you'll probably hear more about Restore Court from the district attorney. And then we also work with the lead, the lead team and other community partners around providing burn resources to individuals with substance use disorder in the community. And we did previously support the Redwood Crossing facility, but there was not enough of a rotation of individuals moving out, and our services were no longer welcome. So on the other slide, for 2024, we served 844 individuals in 876 treatment episodes. So what that says is we had about 32 people return for services after discharging within 2024. We also served 35 individuals in 2024 at Her Place. That is both inpatient, well, not inpatient, women who were living at the house, and then also those who were not living at the house, but continued to receive services there because they had childcare as a need. And then His Place, we served 30 individuals who both lived at the house and who didn't, because they were accessing childcare in order to be able to receive their treatment services as well. We provided services to 900, or, sorry, 292 individuals in our methadone program, and then 27 individuals in our suboxone services last year. And then we also had 82 individuals who participated in our Prime Plus program. We did have 119 hospital responses over last year. Of those 119 hospital responses, 82 participants chose to engage in at least Prime Plus services. And we've had 238 participants since the end of 2022.
Carol, can you unpack Prime Plus, please?
Sure. Prime Plus is a program that is funded through the state that is, it's certified recovery mentors who do outreach to hospitals and urgent cares, and in the community to individuals with substance use disorder who may or may not be interested in connecting with treatment services, but they are still connected with recovery supports. So, and they do build that rapport, they connect with them, they reach back out after, for the hospital responses, they reach back out to the individual 72 hours after their initial contact to see where they're at, if they were with the, with the thought behind engaging in treatment services, if they were not interested in engaging in services at the time that they met at the hospital. Did that answer you?
Yeah, our Prime Plus program's pretty well-known at the hospitals for serving unsheltered population and working hard to find another touchpoint for that population who likely have a substance use issue and are just kind of filling out wherever, aside from our LEAD program and our NCRT program and our, oh, my gosh, whatever you heard today. I mean, we have so many outreach programs. The Prime Plus program is a program, though, that is staffed by-
Certified recovery mentors.
Right. And many that I have interacted with have lived experience.
Yes.
So they understand the circumstance of what those individuals in the hospitals are facing today. And in fact, one of our, I don't know if they still work for the county, but a gentleman that I had met about a year and a half ago was at one point unsheltered and had a pretty severe addiction crisis, and entered in through our Prime Plus program and was so successful, came to work for the program. And in fact, helped us build a relationship with Silverton Hospital, whatever that's called, Legacy.
Legacy.
Which was wonderful. Chief Womack, did you have a question?
Maybe you already said it, but how many-
Please use the microphone.
How many certified mentors are there?
We have a total of nine certified recovery mentors, and they all have lived experience.
Madam Chair, I think one thing I'd like you to touch on is, how long has Her Place been going?
Her Place has been a county program since 2009, and has been in the community longer than that.
How, 20 years or so? One of the things that I think is really impressive about it, and I think it kind of goes to what we were talking about with the conversation around civil commitment somewhat, is it's a structured program.
Yes.
Right? So folks live at the house, they get services at the house, and it's not like when their time at Her Place is over, you guys just wave and never talk to those people again. There's a number of folks who were clients of Her Place who now work for the county. And so I think sort of the robustness of that program is really important. I think we're thinking about folks who are struggling with substance abuse and kind of, what is it, what kind of effort does it take to really help people recover and recover well? So I think that's one thing to think about. And then the other thing that I think is important to think about as well, and Ryan, you talked about this, is when Measure 110 passed, our referrals crashed, right? So the importance of police contact when it comes to referrals into service. I think there is this, this lie or this misinformation that took place during the whole Measure 110 conversation, which suggested that somehow police contact is the opposite of getting people into service. And in our experience in this county, the data shows that in fact, before Measure 110 passed, police contact was the main way that people were referred into service. And after Measure 110 passed, and the drugs were decriminalized, much, many, many fewer people were referred into service in Marion County. And so I think as we think about how do we get people on our streets to help what they need, it's important to think of the police as the bridge to service, not the barrier.
Which I think does transition into when we talk about Restore Court. I mean, that is sort of what we're trying to resurrect a bit, in terms of a referral pathway into treatment, kind of from the law enforcement side.
Thank you.
Is that the board game?
Counselor Norday.
Thank you. What is the annual cost for Her Place and His Place respectively?
Let's see, I should have that off the top of my head. It's usually, they're 700,000, 750,000, something in that, in that range.
Total?
For each one, sorry. Yes.
700, and you serve 35 individuals or so with 700, 750,000 for Her Place?
Correct. Yes.
Plus the kids.
The 35 individuals you listed on your sheet, is that including kids? Yes or no?
Can you use your microphone, Vanessa?
It's still on.
You need to lean into it, they're asking for you to. Thank you.
So 35 include children?
I don't believe so.
Yeah. Because they're not, because they're not enrolled in services. The services, the supports provided to the children are like childcare, you know, making sure that parents are free to seek treatment, and we have their youth taken care of.
So the cost of childcare is included in that 700, 750K?
Correct, because it's our staff that take care of them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Sure.
I just had a question about your Prime Plus program. I know that Chief Womack and Chief Gerbuth, their folks see folks out on the street, they administer Narcan, and sometimes people get up and say, "I'm fine, I don't want to go to the hospital, and I don't want to see you again." Is there an opportunity for us to work together with those people that we're seeing repeatedly and administering Narcan to, in an EMS or in a law enforcement arena, not in a hospital?
There is. We do have a 24/7, basically, it's a 24/7 hotline for our Prime Plus mentors. That's the number that the hospital calls that they respond on. But if we had a call from the community for an individual who just recovered from an overdose due to Narcan administration, they could connect with that individual as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question. Okay. Thanks, Ryan. I'm sure we have many more questions. And because we're running a little long, I do want to pivot to the DA and the sheriff on Restore Court, and then get to a point where we, hopefully, we can have like 15 minutes of discussion?
Yeah. Thanks, Ms. Sheriff. I actually don't think we're going to get too far in the weeds on Restore Court. I think what I, the message I think we want to share today is, a lot of what you've heard are what I would call sort of extrajudicial or outside of our official court process. These are all amazing programs that Health and Human Services runs and is able to manage those really outside of any formal court process. The sheriff and I have a collaboration with Health and Human Services, and thanks to our commissioners, in running really more formal programs, which are necessary for those individuals that intersect with the criminal justice process or the system. So in Marion County, for many, many years, you've probably heard about LEAD, we have chosen to sort of run what I would consider a very law enforcement-forward type program in order to use, as Commissioner Willis said, law enforcement as a bridge, not a barrier to treatment. So what we found over the years, and we've been doing this for almost a decade now, is that these individuals, in some form of usually addiction crisis, but also now behavioral health, they were going to intersect with the criminal justice system, really whether we wanted them to or not. Unfortunately, for many, many years, the only people that responded to calls are people in crisis, were people with a gun and a badge. And we had to figure out how to pair those individuals with the really well-trained Health and Human Services folks, and take ourselves, and I'm kind of referring to the chief and the sheriff and I, outside of the process, and really let the experts do the expert level of work. So in Marion County, LEAD is that program that we instituted about a decade ago. We've had a lot of success with that, and we're happy to get in the weeds with that if you want. I know most people here are probably well-versed in kind of how that works. But that is specifically a program where navigators respond to a call from law enforcement and go right to where the person is. So it's a very in-the-street, in-the-moment kind of outreach. I actually was just in a meeting this morning with Rep. Cruff at our legislature. He's from the Distut's area, and he recently did a ride along with one of our navigators. He really couldn't say enough about his experience with that. And so if you haven't done that, I would encourage all of you to take advantage of that. It's really quite amazing, the level of connection that these navigators are able to do. The sheriff and I always say that they can do in five minutes what someone with a uniform and a badge can't do in five years. The level of connection is pretty amazing. We've been very successful with that program for a- We've been very successful with that program for a long time. There are other formal judicial processes that we have been running in Marion County for a long time in collaboration with our courts. So I don't want to overlook other systems that we have to sort of, again, get people into treatment. So we do run a very robust drug court in Marion County. We run a very robust mental health court. Also Veterans Treatment Court that accesses federal benefits that wouldn't be eligible, that otherwise we couldn't access if people weren't vets. We're able to get them into those programs as well. These are, again, all individuals that are intersecting with the criminal justice system because of a crime that's been committed. We have juvenile versions of sort of mental health and drug court as well. But once, well, Measure 110 was passed and we did lose sort of that connectivity and those resources, we did see the referrals plummet. We had a lot of concern about what was happening out there. I think we all saw differences on the street and some concerns. With House Bill 4002, last session, we were able to use that opportunity to access money for the county to come and, and research some of these programs in a, in a process called, the state calls it deflection. And they specifically gave us money to run deflection programs. I can tell you that deflection is really LEAD. That's what's intended by the program and we already had it in Marion County. And so we could talk more about LEAD if you want to. And again, as Commissioner Cameron said, there's, you have a bingo card there that really talks about what else we did with our 4002 money. So because we already had LEAD and we were already well ahead of, of the rest of the state with regard to deflection, we decided to try to do something more. We knew, we knew, when, in order to get into LEAD, you have to, there are certain criteria, right? It has to be livability offenses. It can't be, and what it cannot be is offenses where restitution is owing to victims. So if you broke somebody's window because you threw a rock through it, or if you damaged somebody's ignition in their car when you tried to steal it by punching that ignition, you're damaging somebody's property and restitution is owing. The formal court system is the only way to force that person to pay that money back. And so if you owed that level of restitution, you were not eligible for LEAD because it's completely outside of the formal judicial process. What we recognize is because we had these certain amount of cases where individuals were owing restitution, but also had significant substance use disorders that could be treated by the kinds of treatment that you've heard so much about tonight, we were looking for a way to connect those cases, have people pay restitution where they otherwise might not be able to, but also get the benefit of a deflection plus type program. Meaning if you go into court, you successfully pay your restitution, you get into these programs with our amazing health providers, and you successfully do all of those things, then we will expunge, dismiss, and expunge the entire criminal event that brought you forward. So it's very much like LEAD in that you will have no evidence of a criminal record if you do all the right things. We've connected you to services and you get the benefit of going on your way without, without the albatross of what sometimes a criminal conviction can be for folks. That little document you have in front of you is just three months of our Restore Court. So don't get too excited because we've got about, we're running at about fifteen people right now, but we just started this in September one with some of that 4002 money. I wanted to clear, and the county will probably want to follow up with this, but our 4002 money that came from the state, we used it to make, to make more robust LEAD programs to actually, to actually, I guess, increase some of the services we're providing through our deflection program. And so this little Restore Court piece is just a small piece. But what we were really successful in doing is sort of starting this pilot program in Marion County that doesn't exist anywhere else in the state for these types of offenses. Those folks that are in the Restore Court process, we partner with the courts. We have a judge assigned that is specific to this case. We have a coordinator who's assigned from the court system, specific to these cases. Health and Human Services, as they said, comes to these court appearances, connects with these individuals. And part of it is to run actual work crews. We call them restore crews. Those are just now starting to get started. We're, we're, again, this is a test program. We're hoping that as, the more, the more months we get into this, the more success we will see. But the idea behind that is these individuals are working on restore crews. These are individuals that otherwise might not have jobs or ways to pay their victims back. Because they're working on restore crews, they're able to pay back that money through that process. So the more hours they do, it checks off their, the amount of money that they owe and that money goes directly to their victims that they earn in those restore crews. The point of the recruit, the crews, like I said, they're just now getting going, is to do things that help our community. So think graffiti abatement, think park cleanup. And so the idea behind this is not only do we have an individual who can find some success, some treatment, some healthier options, get on a better path. They're paying back their victim, but also, also they're paying back a bit of a debt to just our community and making it better. It's a really great idea. I'm really hopeful that we're gonna, that we're gonna see even more success with it, but we really are just getting going. What that little bingo card shows you there, what did you call it, a bingo card? It's really just the types of cases that are getting in there and the type of restitution that we're paying off. So just wanted you to have an opportunity to understand that aside from everything that's outside of the court process, we've got a lot of processes happening inside the formal court system as well. We're trying to recognize that the criminal behavior is born of substance use disorder. And that we're, if we can treat that disorder, we can help people make better choices going forward.
Mr. Attorney, do you want to talk about the unique, the docket itself? Cause you talked about the coordinator, but you didn't mention the defense attorney, which is kind of a big deal, and the prosecutor. And then also, do you want to touch on the, like, what, a thousand backlog cases that were, that you and your office have chosen to apply to this?
Right. So we are trying to use our Restore Court process to solve a couple of different problems. As you may have heard in the news, we have a shortage of individuals able to take indigent defense cases. So in Marion County specifically, we're one of the six counties that have the highest number of unrepresented individuals, meaning they don't have defense attorneys willing to take their cases, willing or able to take their cases and actually represent them in the court process. So a couple of things, Restore Court process partners with our court. We have a coordinator. We have a DA specifically assigned to Restore Court. And, and we have a defense attorney specifically assigned to Restore Court. So if you're in the Restore Court process, there is a lawyer working through those cases that is outside of the other problems that we are having getting people lawyers. So in order to get folks into this Restore Court system, we're starting to see them come in now with new crimes. But the individuals that you're seeing there, that are our first participants in Restore Court, we are taking them off that unrepresented list. So these are individuals that otherwise their cases would not even be getting through the court system at all right now because there is a shortage of defense attorneys. We are putting them in this program if they otherwise qualify, right? Because they owe restitution and have certain types of crimes. So we're, we're attempting to address more than one problem. And, and we're, we're starting small because our experience with the LEAD program, like I said, almost over a decade ago, we learned that in order to be successful in these kinds of programs, you can't do too much too quickly. You have to start small and build upon those small successes. LEAD taught us that very, very well, and we targeted very specific neighborhoods and very specific areas of Marion County to do that. We're trying to do that here by starting with a really small docket to begin with and, and building up. So I think that answers those questions.
Yes, please.
So how long does it take? I mean, I know this is new, so we may not know exactly and probably everyone's different. But what's kind of the average expected time for the Restore program to-
Our goal is less than eighteen months. So ideally, it would be a year, frankly. We are, we're really, as you said, this is new and we're, we are just now getting enough people to actually start running the crews. Those can be fairly labor-intensive, right? We have to put a sheriff's office employee out with those crews to make sure there's some sort of supervision, to make sure that people are actually working and doing what is expected of them. So the, these first few people, we might see that a little bit longer, just to get through that restitution piece. But our goal is really to be involved in a short amount of time, try to see some success. But we turn that over in the court system to the experts as far as the treatment. That's not, you know, I'm no expert in that, right? I leave that to Ryan and his folks. And we're really lucky that we have people, as, as you see off from that list there, that are willing to come to court from Ryan's, Ryan's shop and actually sit there and work through that piece with them. But we're working, we're starting to get on those Restore crews now, and so we're hoping we have enough people. As with everything else that we're dealing with here, one of the challenges are, we're dealing with humans. And they, they, sometimes they disappoint us, right? They make decisions that we wish they wouldn't make. We've seen that a little bit with Restore crews. We've started to schedule some and people haven't shown up like we want them to. So those are just bumps in the road that I think we have to work through. Again, we learned from our LEAD experience that we, I, we just have to keep at it for a while and, and see what kind of successes we can build upon.
And I think that the key component of what she just said is that we're dealing with people and we're dealing with treatment. So what their treatment path looks like is different. Like, as you alluded to, it's going to be different for every single person. And we're, we're not, we haven't designed a box of, a treatment system that, that they have to fit into. The system has to fit around them. And this Restore Court has to evolve into what that treatment system looks like. And since it's never been done before, it's gonna evolve.
Madam Chair, one thing that I wanted to add for this group too is, so we got some money from House Bill 4002, the recompensation of drugs. And I think the legislature anticipated that once, once that change happened, there'd be a flood of police contacts with folks in possession of drugs and there'd be a flood of referrals to our Health and Human Services Department. And so we got some money for that and we staffed up a hotline. And we have not gotten a ton of referrals to that hotline yet. So I think this is an area where I think it'd be great if kind of our law enforcement partners could work together and kind of think about, we obviously, all you have to do is walk down the street to see folks that are struggling in crisis. Is there a better way to kind of help utilize those resources? I think that'd be a good thing for us to think about going forward.
I was gonna say, we did get a couple of deflection referrals from Salem PD, so I want to, I want to highlight that.
That's what I was gonna, Madam Sheriff.
Please.
That's what I was gonna ask to explain. I called it a game board, not a bingo card. Cause it looks like something I would, you know, play a game on.
The game of life.
The bottom, case numbers from four involved agencies, that's, whose cases have been so far-
That's right.
Able to-
To send eligible cases for Restore Court. They're coming from really every agent, all of our big agencies.
So eleven from Marion County Sheriff, four from Kaiser, sixteen from Salem PD. So your officers are already, tell us about, tell us about how that would work. How does somebody, they do a crime and an officer meets them and-
For Restore Court, if on their end, it's gonna happen just like a regular case. So they're gonna send them to us and because somebody owes restitution and the crime is of a specific nature. To be clear, these are not person crimes, right? These are all property level offenses. So it meets a certain criteria. The restitution has to be of a certain amount because we're trying to get restitution where people actually have the ability to pay it off, to work it off. So we, the police don't have to worry about what it is. They just send us the case like they normally would and we have a screening process. And if it fits our criteria, we put it through this process. And the individual, again, it's kind of like everything we've talked about here tonight, the individual still has to accept Restore Court. And I will tell you, because these individuals can go into court and do this, or they can sit on the list and do nothing with no lawyer, there's a, there's a hard balance there, right? We're dealing with humans who are like, so wait a minute, you're telling me I can go to court and do a bunch of stuff or I can do nothing?
And they're probably not going to be sitting in jail because of these crimes.
They will not be sitting in jail on these particular charges for, for the most part. So, so because we're dealing with humans, that we have, there has to be some incentive, right? The incentive at the back end of this, again, is that expulsion. It's that, it's the erasure of that record. So again, if you get the right defense attorney, you get the right information to these folks, clear-headed individuals, this would look like a pretty good deal, right? But, but again, we're dealing with humans that, that have to make their own choice. And this process only works if people are engaging and seeing the benefit from themselves.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Please, Chief Womack.
Thank you. I just want to ask a question because you were asking about more referrals from law enforcement. And I just want to ask on your end what that really actually looks like because you're talking about calling a phone number and we're used to calling LEAD navigators. It's deflection, which means we're not arresting anybody for a crime. We're literally saying, "We don't want you in the criminal justice system. Please come and help us."
That's right.
And so how, what would more referrals actually look like for you?
Yeah, that is a good question. So I do know that we did attend one, at least one of your briefings where we talked with our community response teams and our deflection teams. And I believe there are palm cards out there on the resource table. So that would be what I would, I would recommend in terms of your law enforcement partners or, sorry, our law enforcement partners to take those palm cards that have the deflection hotline number. If you come across somebody that is willing to engage in treatment rather than go down whatever path that you were headed towards, we have, we have that staff twenty-four seven. We will take the call. We will come and arrange transportation. We will wrap services around them. We'll get them an appointment. We'll, we'll kind of take it from there.
Yeah, I really appreciate that because you said willing to engage in services. So we are contacting people every day all the time. It still comes down to this voluntary issue. I can't physically force somebody to engage in anything. And so the person we're talking with, usually our homeless service team officers maybe have developed a relationship over many months where finally someone's like, "Yeah, hey, Sean, I need some help today finally. Let's call Ryan."
Correct.
There's a small window when someone's willing to engage. Most of the time, people don't want to engage in anything. They want nothing to do with us. So the reality is referrals have to be somebody who's willing to engage. It's the same problem we saw under decriminalization. Voluntarily calling phone numbers for help doesn't happen. And voluntary engaging in deflection doesn't happen. And so we're used to calling LEAD navigators to respond maybe twenty-four seven, hot, warm, hands-off. If you have somebody willing to engage in services, we can get someone to show up, do a handoff, and they get a navigator and they move on and we leave. So I'm just, I'm just pushing back just a little bit on this idea of we need to increase our referrals. We've educated and we're encouraging our officers to do so, but it still really is about a willingness to engage in services. There's no, there's no way to force somebody to do this.
I guess I want to clarify what I, what I was just asking, and Chief, you bring up a good point. These people have committed another crime that they're actually going, they're getting booked. They're getting booked. This isn't somebody who-
These are people that have been arrested on, look at the criminal offenses. These people went to jail or they got arrested.
You're, you're speaking of somebody for LEAD referrals. This is somebody who's, who's actually done, done-
No, no, I thought that was appropriate. I actually thought the chief's comments were very appropriate.
In other words, I can't really make referrals into Restore. These are people that I arrest for crimes.
You could make referrals to us into treatment if somebody's willing to do that, because you can offer.
Okay. Just to be clear, I want to be very clear on, I can either arrest people for a crime and they might get into Restore Court, or if some, or if it's not really a crime, I'm voluntarily trying to convince people to take this referral.
But, yeah, but there's a lever.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Willis?
So I actually, I really appreciate what you said because you're right. The crux of the problem is this whole voluntary piece, which you've been talking about this whole time. One thing that I wanted to bring up here, specifically around drug use in our homeless communities, is there are people who are preying on our homeless communities and people in our homeless communities by selling them drugs, getting these, these vulnerable people addicted to drugs, right? And I do think that it's worth our time, our community's time, to take that seriously. And we used to have drug teams. We used to have teams that would investigate this stuff locally. And then when Measure 110 happened, it wasn't a crime anymore, so there was no need for us to do this sort of work anymore. The most vulnerable people in our community are being preyed on by drug traffickers. And I think if we were to focus on this, to spend some more time kind of investigating the people who are targeting our homeless community with drugs, I think potentially what you could see is you could see an uptick in referrals because you'd have an uptick in investigations of the folks who are selling drugs in these communities.
Well, lots changed from the nineties and the two thousands when we had drug teams. It used to be a felony just to possess drugs. And so when you've got somebody with possession, you had like a prison sentence hanging over their head and you could work that case and say, "Who's your drug dealer?" And you can work your way up the chain. It's changed so much. It's just not even that environment anymore. So the reality of having a drug team that works that way just doesn't work that way anymore. Case law has also changed so much. The consequences and the capacity in the jail, everything's just changed so much that you don't have the same sort of leverage over like we used to. It just doesn't work that way anymore. Doesn't say we can't do some of that, but it just doesn't, it's just not as effective as it used to be as a tool. That's the best way I can describe it. And then, and then it's just a resource thing. So like, I don't even have officers to create a, I just created, I just canceled my downtown bicycle team. So I don't have any staff to create any new teams for specialized enforcement, so. And it takes specialized enforcement for those complex cases. And so you need detectives and undercover officers that are trained up and can do that work. And I just don't have the capacity for that either. So it's just such a complex issue. And again, the reality is what we're seeing in our unsheltered encampments, the dealers are also homeless transients that happen to be making a little bit of money by selling drugs. They're not these high-level traffickers. And so your dealer is somebody with a low-level amount on state charges, which, what's gonna happen, Paige? I've arrested somebody on a small amount of drug for dealing. What's honestly gonna happen with a state-level drug dealer with a low-level amount?
Yeah, assuming we can even prove a delivery based on the facts as they're presented to us. Just a garden variety delivery, felony-level delivery of methamphetamine is often at what we call a level four offense under our sentencing guidelines and then is presumptive probation. Almost regardless of what your criminal history is, you're likely to get probation in a situation like that. like that. I do think what the chief said is actually a really important point, when we're talking about trying to make sure that those who sell, and sell drugs and prey upon our communities go to prison, and those who use get a bridge to treatment, right? When we're talking about that first population, those cases are really hard to prove, and much like the behavioral health and the, and the civil commitment world I talked about earlier, we have a lot of adverse case law, and years of it, that has made it really hard for us to establish that. I don't want to lose sight of what the chief said, and I'm just gonna reiterate it, but I prosecuted drug dealers for years as a prosecutor, and the way I used to do that is a possessor, a user would get arrested, and in order to avoid a felony charge, they would tell on, we call it rolling up, they would tell on their dealer, and then we would go to that dealer, and those really skilled investigative officers would then get that guy. So in order to, in order to avoid felony charges for that guy, he would tell on his dealer. And sometimes in a really successful investigation, we would roll that way 10 or 12 times, until we finally got to the guy who was really bringing in pounds of methamphetamine into our community. Under Ball Measure 110, which completely negated any crimes for users, but even 4002, those low-level offenses are barely misdemeanors now, which means the motivation for a user to cooperate with law enforcement is very low. In other words, they don't want to snitch, again, using very law enforcement-related terms here, that I'm sure, I'm sure everybody watches Law Order. So they don't want to snitch, because the option is, you mean, I could, I could get a fine on a misdemeanor, which is the reality, or I could snitch and put myself in real physical danger, because that's not a good thing to do. So we have lost our leverage in these investigations, and they are really difficult for law enforcement. Also, because of that, with Ball Measure 110, many of those drug teams throughout our community, in Marion County, but also statewide, they've been disbanded. So all that level of expertise that we relied on to do those investigations back in the 2000s, early 2000s, those, those officers and those special teams just don't exist anymore. So unless you're talking about really high-level dealing, where they qualify for federal charges with the US Attorney's Office, our local law enforcement is really anemic right now in our ability to do that just by resource, we're also anemic by actual statute, in our ability to actually get kind of juice from that squeeze. So it's just really important to add that.
Sorry. Just in the order of people who want to talk, I have Sheriff Hunter, Dr. Brown, Counselor Matthews, and Commissioner Willis, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll make this fairly quick. One, I want to go backward first, and I want to go back to the comment made about resources and what that looks like. And I, I think I can speak where you all were going, and for instance, I met, I was on the Marion County Fire Defense Board meeting last night, and you had a number of fire chiefs that were looking for, how do we engage resources? And that doesn't mean that law enforcement has to engage in those resources. Remember the difference between civil and criminal, and if we're talking about what is a behavioral health crisis, or a mental health crisis, using that community response teams, or the crisis response teams, we were trying to engage them in the services, because many didn't know that existed. They, they didn't realize that through, and I'm gonna get wrong, because now it's the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, yes, through the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, they can use that resource. What they did know was the Marion County, the crisis response teams had gone away, and Salem's crisis response teams. They knew those had gone away, but they didn't realize there was something in place. So really trying to get that message out is where we're also increasing referrals. And then the secondary issue that went on, I, I would just caution people, that we're talking about two different conversations, and we literally took an off-ramp and bifurcated down a brand-new road right there. And so we were talking about services, and what services look like. The services that we were initially talking about, we're talking about behavioral change, which is rapport to get to influence and persuasion. That is a completely different service than if we are gonna do drug investigations with a drug team, and we are looking to hold people accountable in that sense, where we're trying to essentially get from the bottom to the top, to reduce those drugs coming into Marion County, into our cities in Marion County. It is an utmost of important issue, but I think that is a topic for a different day, because it gets very off-topic of where we are actually in this conversation, and what we're talking about here with the Health and Human Services, and those services that we're providing, and those pathways.
Thank you. Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I enjoy following Sheriff Hunter. Because-
Is your microphone on?
It is, but I don't, is that better?
Yes.
It's just really low.
I'm sorry that these are being so sensitive.
It's okay.
I'm just really loud, so I can be here, and it sounds fine.
Yeah.
It's true.
So, so just to follow Sheriff Hunter's thinking, and I don't think we can get in all of the weeds tonight, because I'm looking forward to seeing what Part II is gonna look like when we come back together.
Great.
But I have a similar question. So if you have restore on one side, and then you have civil commitment on the opposite side, my question would be, if there's someone that, case in point, so across the street, is the street behind me?
There's, there's a street over there, but there's one out here, and technically all four sides are the street.
For a second, yeah. So over there, when I, when I parked, there was, there's an African-American man that I've seen before, right? And I've seen him in multiple settings, and I'll see him on a variety of corners. And then a few months ago, I had, I guess it would be the privilege, I did a ride along with one of Chief Womack's officers, and the same African-American man had an episode to where he was, you know, in the middle of the road, and someone had to call the police, right? And so I guess my question is this, if someone is having a mental episode, and they haven't stolen anything, how do you help them?
Who do you want to answer that question? Because either the sheriff, or, or Ryan, and/or the chief could give you their perspective.
I know they're gonna give it to me, and I really wish Madam Governor is watching this, because I would love for her to answer it, but that's another, that's another conversation. So, so yes, I would want to know, how do you help that individual?
Ryan, please. Let's take it from a health perspective.
Sure. Well, so, so we did talk about our community response teams and going through our crisis program, because really that's, what you're seeing is somebody's experiencing a behavioral health crisis potentially. So what we would really want to get them is connected to our Behavioral Health Crisis Center. So that would be whether that, I guess it depends who sees that individual, if it's a Salem PD officer that sees that individual, call our crisis center, call out a community response team, and let that person engage. The key is gonna be all about safety, you know, for our health staff, so it depends how the person's behaving, it depends if that feels like that's a safe area to deploy our individual. So either we would be able to deploy directly, or if it felt like it was a little bit questionable, we would really expect that maybe your, your law enforcement officer would stay there, at least to sort of allow us to sort of engage that individual in a safe space with somebody there to kind of, to back them up. So that's kind of how we can sort of partner, if you have some, if you have a case like that. But I would say our community response teams, our behavioral health professionals going out in the field, like that's what they, they're willing to do, they're willing to deploy from our crisis center out into the field, and then from there, hopefully, maybe take them back to the crisis center if they're willing to engage with us. But you get back into, they still have to be willing to participate in some, someone's with us.
And, and part of the breakdown is this, and I'm gonna, I'm not speaking for Chief Womack, but I'm gonna repeat what one of the officers told me. There are some people who are unsheltered, who will purposely abuse the system, because if it's cold and wet and rainy outside, they will have an episode, because they know 911, someone is going to respond, and they'll be able to have a two-to-three-day stay in the hospital, because it's warm, and they'll get something to eat. You don't see that on the news, you have to find that out the hard way. And the hard way is either you have to be a ride-along to listen to the experts, or you have to have a conversation with the person in the middle of the street. The average elected official is not going to do that. And so that one individual is magnified by hundreds.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard for me to speak to somebody who's maybe abusing the system, because that's hard for us to judge. But what I would say is, if they engage with us, and they come, and they're in our crisis center, and if they need to stay in our lobby to stay warm, if they get a, get some food that we can provide them, if we, if potentially they're still exhibiting a crisis episode, like we talked about our crisis respite beds and apartments that we can place people in, yes, those are deploy, it's using up resources, to your point, and you're saying, well, that really shouldn't be the solution, that people kind of manipulate a situation. But at the same time, we're trying to get people out of what feels like an unsafe environment, get them into a safe environment, and resources do, there are some resources that exist that people are willing to utilize them. So I think from our perspective, we'd still rather have them engaging with a health professional, providing an assessment, seeing what, what resources we can get them connected to, rather than being out on the street. So I, I wouldn't discourage somebody from accessing those resources, even if you feel like, well, maybe this is somebody that's kind of manipulating a situation, because, hey, it's gonna be cold out tonight. I mean, we, we certainly are gonna see more people showing up at our crisis center when it's freezing weather outside than maybe we will in a summer afternoon, in a summer evening, because that's true, people don't want to spend time under the bridge, or in a park, or wherever, but that's still getting them connected and building a relationship to our healthcare professionals, which I, I think in the long run can still pay benefits, even if it doesn't pay a benefit like in that moment.
And I'll stop there, because I have a Madam Chair's question.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, we're gonna go beyond time, but I appreciate that.
I kind of backtrack a little bit, and just to remind everyone, I had, I was technically on this list before Sheriff Hunter said, and so this is a bigger conversation, which is completely true, this is a bigger conversation, but I'm still gonna step back to my question. So obviously, I totally agree, the 4002 didn't really go to a level that actually gives us the teeth back to be able to roll up cases, as I learned is a new term. But I guess, then I'm kind of looking at this restore option that we're looking at here, and, and some of these, we, all of the individuals that are part of restore have a possession aspect, but they also have a secondary aspect, and we're expunging the secondary aspect by them performing some sort of task. And so I guess I'm looking at this, and I'm not an attorney, or know exactly what kind of penalty comes with some of these, but theft one assumes like that's gotta be the top level of theft, I'm just guessing, and so I'm assuming it has a decent penalty. So it seems like, couldn't those be the metrics, or the, the things that we're utilizing to get that movement from possessors onto dealers, onto kind of getting that distribution piece out of our community?
Potentially. That's not been traditionally super-successful in our experience, right? But also remember, a lot of these folks were coming off of a list prior to drugs even being a crime. So, so yes, we are trying to connect people, we're trying to get these into, these particular individuals in restore court, we're trying to really address the problem, as kind of Ryan was pointing out, and make it so they don't come back at all, right? So yeah, potentially, those, those are options.
And I think you have to look at it from two aspects, when you start talking about theft. To get to theft, what did you have to have? A victim. And so when we're talking about possession charges, and someone giving up their dealer or something else for a possession charge, it's very different than when we start talking about trying to work for consideration on a charge where you actually have a victim, because that victim should have a say in what that looks like if that person is being charged. Do you want this person to be let off for these reasons? So it is a secondary consideration that we don't generally use for that reason.
Commissioner Willis?
So I just want to say thank you to the four of you there, both for your comments tonight, but then your work. I mean, I have a lot of trust in you, in your work, and this reminds me of the other crises we faced, whether it was after the wildfire, or during COVID, where we were dealt a bad hand, and we did the best we could to serve our community. And so I think, you know, we all said, after 4002 was passed, that if you're a user, you're gonna get treatment, and if you're a dealer, you're gonna go to prison. Well, it sure seems like maybe we're not able to fulfill the second part of that promise with the tools we have right now. So I think the, the challenge for us is, can we figure out how to do what they told us 4002 would allow us to do, which is get the drugs off our streets and put the dealers in prison? And if not, then I'm gonna have to conclude that 4002 wasn't the success they said it was, that it was a failure, and that we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to fix that. But that's not your fault. I know how hard you guys work, and I know how much you care about this community, so I guess my ask would just be that, even though we have a robust healthcare system, even though we have a lot of services, if people are still bringing this poison into our community, we're always gonna be running on sand. So any help you guys can give, and trying to tackle that challenge would be appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate what you're saying, and I don't want it to get lost where the three of us are at. The message that you heard, that those that are coming into, into our county, and into our cities, and bringing drugs into those, and preying on the vulnerable, we haven't changed the pursuit of them, nor has the DA's office changed their prosecution of them. We did get some things back to help us do that. And again, I think we're actually on to a third conversation now, because the, the drug team conversation is one, the dealer prosecution is another, and then trying to help people through the services like lead, or prime plus, or other things like that, is really a third conversation. So we are still making traffic stops occurring at night, where we are getting substantial quantities of drugs, and those are coming off the streets right now, and those people are being prosecuted appropriately for their possession, or their possession with intent to sell of what those are, based on the other evidentiary items that we're finding in those vehicles, and, and they're associated with. So we're not moving away from, our 4002 isn't necessarily attached to that concept of being able to prosecute those dealers for what they've done. The conversation in the middle was, how do we potentially work through the lower-level folks to get to those folks, specifically talking about our homeless community? And I think that's the secondary conversation that we started, that we can continue on a, on a different day, about how that goes. I just, I just don't want to leave the, the message that we're failing to prosecute dealers. I don't think that's the correct message.
I heard two different things from you tonight, so I'm gonna, I'm a little confused, but we can follow up later.
I think it's a book-in conversation. I understand what you're saying, but I think, maybe if I can clarify it a little bit further, the frustrations that we've talked about with Chief Womack, and with, with obviously our team on a regular basis, is not about what you're not doing with the two and a half pounds that you brought off the, the street this week, right? It's about the corner of Sunnyview and Lancaster, and the intersection of entering into Wallace Marine Park, and the, you know, I, we all could name the locations to where we know that what you described, Chief Womack, are the, maybe a little more able-bodied, unsheltered population who are making a little money off of distributing small quantities. We have to have that conversation as a community, because that is disrupting our community aggressively on, on all fronts. And we, we've heard it, I mean, I listen to city council meetings, I mean, people come and testify to you about the things that they're frustrated by. We're not telling you, I'm not telling you anything that you don't know. I think what Commissioner Willis is trying to get at, and I also know what you're saying, is 4002 didn't solve that problem. It did not. And it was hopeful, and it was presented by the majority party that it would, but we never said it would solve that. I never believed that 4002, when I was championing to get to the outcome, that it was gonna solve every one of our issues, because if, I, I just never did. And I testified to the opposite in the legislature, aside law enforcement, about what we need in our communities. We couldn't achieve that. Like literally, the three of us that went into that building during February 2024 couldn't achieve that with the rest of our leadership team across the state in that space, with, frankly, the Democrats. And the Republicans weren't willing to sacrifice some of their wants to get a little more aggressive outcome from what the Democrats were presenting. It was very much of a partisan thing, as you know. We have an opportunity in April, when we go to the legislature, because we will be there, to help them understand that 4002 was a start. We always said it was a start. It's not well-funded, it's not well-designed, it's not well-overseen. And what you're describing, what Mayor Hoya's been describing for more than a year, is the message that we, as a collective body, have to get on the same page with, and go in as, as a unit and say, we need X, Y, and Z for this specific community, because we don't want to live anymore in a community where people are harming each other, sheltered or unsheltered. And that there needs to be a scale of accountability for everybody in that system. I mean, that's the reality. So you heard right, I just think it's frustrating that the message has been sent, and frankly, probably through some of my optimism, that we got anywhere in February 2024 with House Bill 4002. And I'm very proud of the work, as you are, with the teams that we have acquired in this community to put together restore court, the lead team, the health teams, et cetera. But we have a lot of work to do, hence this conversation here with the county and our largest jurisdiction in the county, to figure out how we tackle it. So I, I hope maybe that helps you.
Yeah, that's helpful, thank you.
Okay. Okay. So we're about 10 minutes over, and you've been very quiet, which I love, your listening skills. Is there anything that you would like to add in closing before I wrap this up and then invitation to the next?
I think what stood out to me, Chief, was your frustration. It's obvious, and I'm sorry. I wish that there was more that I could do to change the outcomes that your department is experiencing with our folks on the street. And Chief Gerboth, I don't, it doesn't go unnoticed that your department deals with a great deal of folks every day in these similar situations, maybe not criminally related, but in terms of addiction. And I, my hope in this group coming together was that we could come to a similar page and be able to move forward to affect change that is going to improve the outcomes for everyone. Not only those either addicted or suffering from mental illness, or those committing crimes because of either one of those things, but for the people who actually are just living and working and trying to go to school and enjoy a park and whatever it is that they want to be able to do here in Salem. Side note, and my sense of humor gets in the way sometimes, but I thought, if Law and Order 2025 in Salem, Oregon was a TV show, I would not watch, because it's incredibly frustrating. And I, anyway.
It's like Grey's Anatomy in 2021, when we stopped watching it because we didn't want to relive COVID.
And I want to make sure that everyone's had a chance to have input as far as council is concerned. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah. So I have a- Oh, please. And I'm sorry, but they're gonna open the door and wave me down if we don't get you to talk straight into the microphone. Thank you.
Where are we in the agenda?
We're, we're post the agenda. We're like in the discussion, working to close up.
Follow-up discussion.
Okay. Great. See, I have a lot of miscellaneous questions, but I think some of them will be best for staff, because one of the things I didn't see tonight was budgets. And our budgets reflect our priorities. So I didn't see on, the stats are great, they're always useful, but I, you know, I like to see how much money is being dedicated to behavioral health, how much of it is being dedicated to homelessness, outpatient mental health, and so on. One of the things that struck me about your budget is how much of it comes from the state and the federal government. More than property tax dollars.
Yes, considerably more.
We do not have that at the City of Salem. We don't get $101 million a year from the state. We don't get $118 million from the feds. And I understand, I'm assuming correctly, that they are pass-through dollars largely. You don't have discretion, you have, that money comes in for-
Oh, yes, it's very dedicated.
It comes in for a specific purpose, it goes out for a specific purpose. So another thing that struck me is that 74% of your general fund is all on public safety. That is not the case for all other counties. In some other counties, it's more like 50%, as in Deschutes County, it's 51 when I Googled it tonight. So I just find that interesting. I'm trying to dive in your budget document, but it's like ours, it's massive. And it's a little unclear. Like, I asked, for example, how much you spent on her place, because it wasn't clear from the budget document. Because it's not categorized that way. It's just categorized by gigantic budgets. But I always like to know, how much money are you actually spending to help our unsheltered? How much money are you dedicating to that? And how much of it is being spent on housing people in jail? Those are questions that I think our community wants to know. Let me drill down to some actual questions. The CRT, so there is an equivalent in Eugene that's been in operation for over 30 years. And I Googled it, and in a recent year, they had 18,000 calls for service. And they, they had 18,000 calls for service, not 18,000 calls where a police officer also arrived, or there was a, a police-led model, but 18,000 calls, period. And I think part of the reason why they have success is, it's been around for 30 years, they've had a long time to build it up and develop awareness, so everyone in the community knows cahoots. Everyone in the nation practically knows cahoots if you follow this. There's a cahoots bill that Senator Wyden passed, which greatly enhances Medicaid reimbursability, so long as it's civilian. You can't have cops on the unit. And so I, I'm just curious. I know you guys have not had a lot of people respond to CRT, and it's a new program, that's to be expected. One of the things I'm curious about, in Eugene, there's lots of ways that you can call for cahoots. Like, if you don't know their number, you can dial 911, and the 911 dispatchers are trained to, just like 911 dispatchers know, well, they're reporting a fire, so I won't send police, I will send Dave Gerboth and his excellent team. I, actually, I'm sure our fire chief does not personally respond to our phone calls for fires, although he, he does an outstanding job. We have an outstanding, by the way, an outstanding fire chief and an outstanding police chief. They do incredible work in a city that is rapidly growing, right? And experiencing growing pains, too. So we have two outstanding chiefs, and I want to say thank you publicly. So the cahoots in Eugene, their CRT, has calls that can come in through 911 or a non-emergency line. Are 911 dispatchers for this area trained to refer calls to CRT?
No, we would get calls from 988.
Right. So that's part of the limitation, then? Because if 911 doesn't, you, you're missing out on potential calls, then. I mean, that, I think that's just fair to say.
It's also a shift in the system. Just, well, yes, and just before I let you jump in, it's also a shift in the expectation of the system to reduce the burden on the 911 system. 988 was a federal-funded movement, and not always does the Marion County Board of Commissioners and our team decide to follow in line with like any themes, but the 988 system is something that we are working to follow in line with, because it's funded by a source that we don't have to chase dollars for. And 911 is overtaxed, as is, and we want to work really hard to create that consistency in our community.
I hear you, but people are going to call 911 anyway.
Sure.
Because they don't know any better. Chief Gerboth, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, thank you very much. So currently, the Salem Fire Department runs the Lamont Valley Communication Center. We do get 911 calls for behavioral health crisis, that, we do refer that to 988. So we also have the backdoor number for the, for the crisis response team. So we have actually taken a lot of calls out of the 911 system by utilizing that. I will tell you some of the challenges. And Sheriff, thank you for being at the, at the Fire Defense Board meeting last night, because it did put some clarity to some of the questions we have, where in the fire and EMS side, we get a lot of calls, some where we have people that are either threatening or engaged in self-harm. And so we send an engine company, we send an ambulance, but because of the civil discussion, law enforcement's not coming. Well, the CRT's not gonna come because there may be a danger. Firefighters aren't gonna engage in EMS because there's gonna be a danger, but law enforcement can engage, so they don't get any service, right? And so, so that is a catch-22 that certainly our services are in. But, but to your point, we are, we are very well-engaged in referring those to 988 and sometimes CRT in the backdoor.
Thank you. My next question had to do with a different category altogether, and that is your housing authority. So Marion County has a housing authority, you briefly mentioned them earlier, so does Salem. The Salem Housing Authority houses roughly eight to 8,000, give or take, 8,000 people or so. I'm just wondering, how many people per year does Marion County Housing Authority house?
So Marion County-
Different departments.
Marion County Housing Authority is an outside entity, has nothing to do with this system at all.
Okay.
So we can get you that information. In fact, I think Christine Sommers is watching. She's, well, she used to work for the Salem Housing Authority, but they're not in this room, because they're not a part of this system.
We have some preference vouchers, so we have like ancillary relationships with them in terms of helping us to place some of our clients, but yeah, we have no.
We have several hundred units outside of the Salem city limits that we can serve, but I don't have that number off the top of my head.
It's a much, we're much smaller than Salem.
Yeah.
Okay. And I find that interesting, because at, in Salem, all of the, with one exception, all of the Salem Housing Authority commissioners are also the city councilors.
This commission is the board for that body. I just don't have the units memorized.
Okay, got it.
It's roughly about 1,000 vouchers.
Okay. And I'm just wondering, so Shaw does, I mean, they do a phenomenal job actively seeking competitive grants, federal funding, they're working really hard on that. And I'm just wondering, do you know, does Marion County collaborate at all with Shaw? Because I can envision, there's, you know, to me, I would really love to have spent more time tonight on affordable housing. Because I think that in, is the single biggest challenge we have, is everything, I think, flows from that.
Sure.
So I would love to hear-
We will add as a follow-up topic. I can tell you that-
Can I finish? I, I would like to just see us focus on that perhaps another time, because to me, that, that is really worth a conversation in its own right. This has been great, and I love learning more about Restore and all that, but I feel that there's opportunities that we haven't taken advantage of that would allow Salem and Marion County to collaborate on affordable housing projects. There's a lot of people who are just right on the verge of, are they in Marion County? Are they in Salem? I'm thinking of the unincorporated areas of Marion County, where, I mean, it would really help. When more people can live indoors, there's less drugs, there's less crime, there's less garbage, there's less mental health challenges, because people can focus on the things they need. Housing is so essential. So anyway, I would just love, this has been really great. I would just love that next time we come together for a joint session, we'd love to see more conversation around how we could move the needle on affordability of housing.
Commissioner Willis?
Certainly open to collaboration, and certainly open to looking at how we can work together to increase affordability of housing. There is a history that you should know, which is, there was a time where the City of Salem and Marion County were looking to actually merge their housing authorities, and it was a very negative experience for Marion County and one that we are not interested in repeating. So that's some important history for you to know.
Sure. I'm not advocating for merger. Didn't occur to me to even think of that, but I appreciate that. But, you know, we've got a lot of new councilors, we have a new mayor this year. I feel like, to me, this is an opportunity for a reset of a lot of relationships.
I can tell you that Jason Eisenbeis, who's our director for our housing authority, and Nicole Oates are very close. They spend a lot of time together, like a lot of time together. And we're, the concept of porting vouchers and providing preventative services and supported services is county-wide. We don't really look at a barrier for that, because that comes from the health system. We, I, I know, I'm sure you know this, but the way the system is designed is a HUD system. And so we followed with the boundaries of the HUD system for our housing authority and, but we are aggressively outside of Salem, in the rural areas of the county, bringing on additional units of housing, and have a great new mindset of that housing authority. It's just newer. I'd say it's less than 30 years old. So I look forward to seeing how that can grow outside of the city for units out there and, of course, bring people off the streets.
Commissioner Cameron?
Well, Madam Chair, and fellow commissioner and councilors, I just want to say that this has been a really good night. Started off with breaking bread upstairs, and, you know, to get together like this and talk about some of these things. I want to say thank you to our Health Department, to our public safety leaders, you know, that do all this hard work, and to our DA and all the staff that put this together. This is a step towards working together that probably we haven't seen in a long time. And I really appreciate, Madam Chair, that you and the mayor, and I know Keith and Jan, and so some of the things that we hear that people want to talk about in the future when we're setting an agenda for future meetings, obviously, that's important that we listen to those things. But I just, as, as the senior-
The dean, the dean of the commission.
The dean, or as a senior of the commissioner, my bedtime is in five minutes.
Yes.
Because I work out at 6 o'clock in the morning, so I, I hope we can get this done.
We're almost there. So I just want to wrap up with a couple of things that I took away from tonight. I would really love it, Ryan, if your team, specifically Debbie and Carol, can connect with the fire chief and just really provide a really comprehensive understanding of what our, our available response services, systems are. So that way, as you're programming through and trying to engage at the dispatch center, like, what does that backdoor call look like? You feel really good about who's answering the phone.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know, they recently were, you missed Debbie recently.
Great.
But yeah, we can, we can continue to follow up.
Great. And then I do think it'd be interesting, Ryan, for you to follow up with the, either the chief, the fire chief or the sheriff, and have a visit with the Fire Defense Board. I think there is, is, we heard tonight, some, a lack of understanding around what's available and how to access what is available, and we always want to do better to provide communication, and I just think that's an avenue. I took down Counselor Nordike's request for affordable housing on the next session. I also heard several things come from you, Dr. Brown, that I think will come into a future conversation. So I just want to thank all of you for spending your time here tonight with us and being willing to engage in what this partnership can be, and leaning in with grace and understanding that I, I think everyone here is here for the right reason, to provide a livable, safe community for our neighbors, and that we all have constraints. And our limitations are, as a county, are different than the limitations of that of the city. And as long as we enter into the conversation with pure understanding of what that is, I think we can find a real, true collaborative path forward to advocate for the resources for our community that's adequate. Please, Dr. Brown.
Well, well said, Madam Chair, well said. I want to be short, because I don't want to mess up commissioners' bedtime.
I know, I'm timing you, because he really wants to go.
Four minutes. So, so earlier, we did introductions of the folks over here, but we don't know who the young people were over there and behind us.
They're members of the audience, but if they-
Oh, you guys are just visiting?
Yep.
Oh, okay, well, hello. I wasn't sure.
I did, I knew.
Well, because I was thinking, like, I was like, are they interns, or are they just here hanging out for fun?
We have congressional staff over here, and I think members of the media over there.
Oh, okay, well, I understand, hello, glad you guys are here. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to say anything before we officially adjourn this meeting? Okay, well, oh, please, thank you. Counselor Gwen, nice to hear from you tonight.
Well, I'm seeing on the agenda, it says next steps, so what are the next steps?
Yeah, thank you. So the next steps are, is I think we, the leadership of the county, so you all need to have a conversation and kind of debrief with yourselves, and we'll do that. And then myself and our administrator, and your mayor, and your city manager will get together and have a conversation and schedule another meeting. That's the next step, in my opinion. Work sessions are the west way to have conversation, and of course, it's public meetings, so this is probably what we'll do again. Okay, thanks for asking. All right, meeting adjourned.